Right.
Okay, good evening. And welcome to the October 12th, 2021. For the trustees work session.
Um, you're not out there, you are okay. You can't just keep on. Okay, thank you.
Does nobody want to open the meeting?
Shall move.
Okay. I need a verbal motion to open the meeting from someone I can hear.
I move to open the meeting.
I second to open the meeting.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. First item on the agenda is a new item on the agenda, adoption of the agenda. We want to make a motion to adopt the agenda. I'll make a motion to adopt the agenda. I have a second.
I have some comments. I have a couple of comments. Before. I have a couple of comments, I, I think, a couple, one item at least is not correct. And I have a few suggestions. The item that I think is not correct and should be stricken is L. Again, adoption of the agenda. That item. Was already decided and voted on. If it's going to put on, it should then if. I believe it was the mayor who wanted to get this back on the agenda. Then there's something, it should come as a new business. That will help us, you know, move our, our assets. So. Okay, I, my comment would be to adopt the agenda, striking. L from old business and putting it in new business. So that's my comment. Now, I also have a suggestion for staff. To have this in chronological order. I think that makes sense with the rules. Since the rules. The rules are, are that you have all the business and then new business and how they're put on the agenda. So. So by putting things in different order, it, it really confuses our agenda. So I would recommend.
Let me just ask, are you saying that sort of oldest item? Goes first on the agenda and then chronologically like that?
I think that's, that's how it should be. Yes.
I'm just, I just want clarification. Okay.
So that's, that's my second comment. My third comment then is, uh, there are some items that are on for, for regular meeting. I, I think. That of course is, is, is okay, but they should be discussed. As soon as we adopt the agenda, if there's any, any, any concerns. Also, I think at some point we had a. Idea that if there's no backup, it should not be on the agenda. Also, uh, there should be some clarity as to why some things are held over and why not? So, but by having things in chronological order, that could help a lot. Okay, so those are my comments and my specific one. Is, is to, is to move the adoption of the agenda to, to. To a new item. So that would be my changes for adoption, for adopting the agenda. And then get working. Probably as important is. I think we have this, this working. Method that, you know, once we have things in chronological order, we just see. And address it briefly whether we need more information. Or whether it should be ready for a regular session. So except. I think the combination of having it in chronological order, we just expeditiously looking at. Whether things are ready for big, for discussion or, or actually to be. This move to regular session that those two come. Combination of the two, I think are going to get us moving, moving. Fast and clearing out this, this agenda that is, that is growing. And has backlog, a tremendous backlog. And thank you colleagues for accepting this. I think this will help us.
Uh, I will second the motion of moving, uh, item L to the new business agenda.
Okay.
Does the motion include doing these now in chronolo-, you're suggesting this be all done in chronological order?
Correct.
You know.
Yeah, everything has a date or two have a date. And then we can go quickly.
There's a lot that doesn't have a date. So I, I'm fine with doing things in chronological order. Why don't we wait until we, we, we get the chronological order? Before we enact that. Because there's a lot of, almost half the items don't have dates.
That was my request last week. That was my only comment. So we could have an orderly discussion. Okay, I, I, I think it's kind of part of our rules already. So it's not a new rule. It's really kind of. I, I. Organizing things as they are, but.
But it's hard to do things chronological order when you don't have a chronology. You know what I mean?
Yeah, yeah. If I can interject, I think it's only on old business. I mean, all the new business obviously is today, right? That's the date. And then it's just R and. K don't have dates.
No. O. P.
No, 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 L has a date.
I don't have a date on mine.
It says carried over from September 27.
I must have a different. Of dates.
I think, you know, Tom, you picked up an earlier version and I, there's some changes I had to. Make. I think I said I may have put some of the dates on.
If there are dates, then I'm fine with doing that.
Everything has a date except for K and. R.
So. I sent an email explaining ours. It's, it's kind of a. Follow up from the, uh, discussion of Murda, of Murda. I don't know how you wanted me to.
All right, all right, I'm, I'm fine with the chronological thing. Although I, I don't agree with this, uh, new item to the agenda, but I'll deal with that later on. I, I seconded Victor's motion. We'll do it in chronology, but, uh, we have. Chief tonight and, uh, I don't want to leave the chief waiting, so we'll do the chief first.
But before we do that, if we, we need to vote on the motion, um, but K. In Dan's, the private email was dated February 26th. It actually goes back much earlier than that, but that was. In your most recent email, are you cited that date?
I don't have it on here. But you know what? It, it, it can't be February 26th because we interviewed people and offered people jobs way after that. So this, this actually really should be a new item.
It's not, it's a continuation of that. I disagree with you.
Well, yeah, but you, I understand that, but it's not a continuation if we went through an elaborate process. And we want to talk about what process to take now. So it's not a continuation. It's a whole new thing because we went through a process. The job was offered to people, people denied the job.
Well. I, it, it was, I'm looking at. It was on as old business on September 27th, so it had to be on at least from September 9th. I don't have the September 9th agenda in front of me.
Okay, then we'll take it from there. There's a motion and a second. I can already see how this is saving time. Paul Corwell. Trustees, Winter?
No.
Trustee Natchez?
Yes.
Trustee Lucas?
Yes.
Trustee DeFore?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy? I disagree with the whole process of having, uh, the adoption of the agenda happen. I will deal with that at another time, but since I, I, I seconded a trustee to Paul's motion. Uh, I will vote yes, but I think that this is. Not needed and it's not done by any other municipality in, that I know of, but I, I will vote yes on it tonight. Okay. Where's the chief? Hi, chief.
Hi, good afternoon.
We have with us tonight. The chief of the Village of Amerik Police Department, Brusa. Chief DeRusa, you want to address the board about, uh, increasing authorized lieutenant positions in the Village of Amerik Police Department to meet operational needs. And scheduling interviews to fill existing vacancies in a sergeant position. So what in sum and substance, I'll let you elaborate, this is, is making the person. Uh, or, or a person. Who is now a sergeant, a lieutenant and putting them in charge of the detectives bureau. This, this.
Correct.
Be adding another body, uh, to the role call of the police department. This will be adding, uh, it wouldn't be adding, it would be promoting one person. To a position that then doesn't need to be filled. Right? So it would really be giving a title instead of, uh, you know, making a, a space that then needs to be filled by another salary. Is that correct?
Correct. So we're not increasing the department's complement. We're just changing the rank structure.
And, uh, if memory serves me well, which usually doesn't. But I read it recently, uh, that this was a recommendation, uh, from the Bratton report from, uh, 2007 or 2008, I forget which.
That is correct. The Bratton report was in 2000, um, 2008, November. Um, and that was one of the things that they identified, um, as an improvement for the department.
Chief, does it, would you like to talk, talk to this?
Sure. So, uh, you know, I don't think I need to read the whole memo again, but I did submit a memo to the board. Regarding the justification, um, to make that third lieutenant position. So basically to keep that position in line with the current lieutenants, um, that I have. Um, as well as, you know, what the Bratton report had indicated. I also, as part of my homework, um, called around to a couple of different departments. Towns and villages in Westchester County, just to kind of get an idea about their structure. So I actually had called one, two, three, four, six different departments. And all of them had at least a captain and two lieutenants. Or if they didn't have a captain, they had three or four lieutenants.
Is everybody aboard of questions or concerns?
No, I, I want to thank you for the memo and I also noticed that there is money in the budget for this already. Yeah. Yes.
And this would really mean an increase of, uh, a salary of like around $6,000 a year, right?
Correct.
I'm fine for beginning the process of interviewing prospective candidates for this position. Is that the consensus of the board?
Yes, I'm fine with that.
Victor's got a thumbs up, so there you go.
Yes.
Yes.
All right, chief. Have a good evening.
Hold on, we're not done yet.
What?
We're not done. You're trying to get rid of me too quickly.
Okay, let's do it.
So, um, I also had sent a, a memo to the board about the sergeant positions. So, right, so currently we have authorized four positions of sergeant with the Department of Human Resources of Westchester County. So we have technically four vacancies, three of which have been filled up until recently. But there is a fourth position. That hasn't been filled for some time and as part of my memo to the board, I indicated some reasons why I felt I wanted to fill that fourth vacancy. And again, I don't want to read the whole thing, but, um, hopefully everyone had time to read that. So not only will it allow us to dedicate somebody full time to the accreditation process. But will also allow for additional supervision, um, specifically on weekends. And to allow us to continue to receive some grant funding. That now a lot of agencies will only allow, uh, departments to pursue that if they are either seeking accreditation or are accredited. So as part of that, I also had called around to different municipalities. And as indicated in my memo, it talks about the different departments and how. 12 out of 13 have someone dedicated full time to the accreditation process. We've been looking, we being the Village of Amerik Police Department have been looking to get accredited since, uh, former retired chief Flynn was here. And Lieutenant Matero, um, was assigned that task and. So for 25 years on and off, we've been trying to get this done. And I think that now is the time to really focus on getting it done, especially with, you know, police reform and a lot of the departments seeking accreditation. I think it would be a good thing for us to have. Um, and I do feel that the way to get this done is by having that fourth person assigned to that full time.
And this was. A major plank in the police reform committee's recommendations to the village.
Correct.
But have any questions or concerns?
No, I support the, the, the chief in his effort.
So I think, I think, I think we have to, the board has to, uh, send around dates to, uh, do interviews then chief.
Correct. So, um, the newly certified sergeants list is out. So what I'd like to do if. The board is amenable to it, possibly sometime the first week in November to have interviews scheduled.
What about for, for the other position lieutenant?
I have, I would still have to canvass the county for that. So we could do that and maybe a couple of weeks after that, or maybe around the same time, depending on everyone's schedule.
Okay, so I'll, I'll, I'll send an email to the board to look for dates in November.
Terrific. I really appreciate everyone's support on this. I think it's something that needs to get done in order to achieve this goal.
Okay. Thank you, chief.
Thank you very much.
Have a good evening.
You do as well.
Okay, as long as we're on a new business page, why don't, why don't we take off, uh, the stuff that's on for the regular meeting and then we'll go into executive session. And then we'll go back to the agenda.
I. You know, I thought we had a process where we were going to do executive session. At the end of the work session so that we, you know, and then we were going to delay our. So we actually got the agenda accomplished.
All right, so what, I, I think you might be right. I forgot, to tell you the truth. And it shouldn't be that long of a work. So let's. We go to eight o'clock now, but you need a break. Stop at 7:45. So. Maybe about 7:25, 7:30, we'll go to, uh. Executive session. Let's get, let's get done with the regular meeting stuff and then we'll go back to the agenda.
Okay, so. There is, there still is the issue, I think you and I may disagree, Tom, but. K has in last communication at a February date.
Okay.
And should be there. So I would, I, I believe, I believe, I believe.
That's not what we're doing now, Dan. We've, we've, we're doing a new business that's on for the regular meeting.
I, I understand we're going to do the new business. Then when we finish that, that's what I'm trying to get to.
Okay, let's, let's do what we're doing. Okay, let, let me run the meeting, Dan. I appreciate it. The Turkey Trot. These are just the, the days of closing streets for the Turkey Trot. Turkey Trot was a success last year in spite of COVID. We, we missed one year. Everybody. Uh, okay for that?
Yes.
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 Paving of East Hickory Road on for regular meeting. Dan Soff, can you just give a quick?
Sure, the, uh, the town of Amerik is currently, uh, in the midst of their paving program. They are paving. Rockland Avenue and their portion of East Hickory Grove Drive. They've asked the village if we would like to participate in their contract. To have their contractor ELQ do the resurfacing of. East Hickory Grove Drive between the town border and Rockland and Rockland Avenue between the town border and. East Hickory Grove Drive. I provided some estimates on the cost of the work, which is believed to be somewhere between $25,000 to $30,000. Now, that's kind of the, the short version of that.
Okay.
I have a couple of questions. I drove up there and it appears that the town has finished their paving.
Well, I think they did their, they started their work on the 10th. They approached us at the end of September. We informed the town that we had to, uh, speak with the board and that our meeting was on. The, uh, on, uh, tonight.
I, I, I understand that, but they, they've already completed their paving on, on their two streets.
Okay.
So, you know, they're, from, from what I understand, they're out of there.
Uh, they can always go back. It's just a matter of repositioning the equipment.
The second question that I have. Is how does it rank in terms of need? Because. There are a lot of other streets in the village that seem to be in much more need than what you're talking about, uh, which seem to be in, uh. Reasonably good condition.
My, I, I don't have a copy of the town's pavement, or pavement management survey, if they have one. But I imagine the condition had to be very similar to what was in their, uh, survey. Which caused them to, uh, redo these roads at this time.
I, I think trustee Natchez is asking about our priorities though, not the town's. Like how does this fit in the village priorities of repaving?
You know, we haven't updated our pavement list recently. Now, the discussion that we had. After the, the major paving we did two years ago. Was to do a real pavement management study to establish a priority list for the roads. Uh, this is just one of those things where the contractor was mobilized or he did a port, the, the town's portion. Of these roadways. So it was an opportunity to try and, yeah. Continue that work for that little, that little section. It was about 6,000 square feet total of, of roadway.
It, it's adjacent to Rockland Avenue. And near Baldwin Place. Do we have a schedule of when we'll be paving those or when we last paved those?
Um, I could find out when we last paved it. I don't believe we have a current, uh, schedule. Yeah, that was part of doing a pavement management study after the last round of major paving.
In the backup that was sent, there was a map and the map shows that we're, that the proposed paving would be on three roads, including. A portion of Baldwin Place and I'm not quite sure how we got that.
Uh, this was prepared by the town of Amerik. Let me take a look at the map. No, it's, it's Rockland and Hickory. That's what I'm seeing.
What I have has a yellow line. Oh, on three, you know, on borders on three streets. And that without, without any segmentation of those streets.
Uh, I, I can share my screen to, to show you what I'm seeing, uh, if you give me a moment.
Yeah, I, I'm seeing just the Rockland and Hickory Grove and mine, mine's not in color. I don't know where the yellows.
Uh, my, mine is in color. Let me, uh, let me share my screen and. Uh, let's see if this works. Okay, do you see my screen?
No.
Yes.
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, they, you know, Baldwin, it's my house, Baldwin is over here. This is, I'm, I'm just seeing Hickory Grove and Rockland.
All portion of Hickory Grove.
Yes, that's correct.
Of Rockland.
Yep.
Where Rockland terminates. For the Village of Amerik.
Correct.
And how's it, does that price compare to the price that, oh. Was negotiated last year for the paving project in the, in the village?
Oh, well, last year we had our contract with Morano. Was that the contract you're referring to?
Yes.
Uh, I'd have to look it up, but I mean, that contract's expired. I mean. But my, 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 I'll, I'll take a look. My guess is we paid somewhere between $100 to $120 a ton. That's. That's pretty much been the going rate for asphalt for the past several years. But I can certainly answer.
And the proposed town rate is what?
$122 a ton. Basically, we can. I think it's on the next page.
That, that's what it says, 122.
Yep. So I mean, the, the pricing is in line with what I've seen for the past many years. I mean. Asphalt is a petroleum based product. Though, I mean, it, it can fluctuate greatly. I, I know. When I started in this business, it was about $40 a ton. Now it's a lot more than $40 a ton.
Well, part, part of what happens too, when, when things like this happen, when the community is a butt. Is you have a nice paved road and then bang, you're in the Village of Amerik in, in a rough road. And, uh, you know, it, it's so, part of it is, uh. Appearances too, right?
Yeah. I mean, it's a lot easier than the last time I had to negotiate a paving contract with the town of Amerik, which was. Many, many years ago for Griffin Avenue. Yeah, now we can.
Because.
A lot easier now.
But we're going to be in the same situation because we're just stopping abruptly on Rockland Avenue.
Right, but it won't be where the sign says Village of Amerik.
Yeah, and it, it's a block segment.
It's, you know, it's going to be 100 yards beyond it or something, 600 yards beyond it. I, I just, I mean.
Typically, we don't pave entire roads in one stretch. You, you do blocks of road. So, you know, you wouldn't do, say. You know, Northbury Avenue between, uh, Halsted and. Uh, Post Road, you would do Northbury Avenue between Halsted and Brook.
I guess, guess to, to Dan's question. You know. Where is this in our priority list? We're simply doing this because the town asked us to. And now that the town is finished, are we sure the offer's still on the table? And, um.
Well, I mean, the town. Please go ahead, trustee.
No, I'm just saying, like, since they did finish the work, because they asked us several weeks ago and it's been, you know, obviously a busy few weeks. Where is this in our paving schedule? And is this, is the offer still stand considering their equipment, I mean, their vendor's gone?
Um. I believe the offer still stands because they are, the town is aware of our schedule. Uh, they, they know that we have to talk to our board. Before we can move forward with any sort of paving. The fact that, you know, they only asked us this question. I believe, I think originally they may have, uh, spoken with Tony, obviously with the floods that has delayed things a lot. They approached Jerry and me at the end of September, asking the question again. So this is our first opportunity to really speak with the board about this. So they're aware of our schedules. I, I have to imagine that the offer, yeah, is still good.
Hey, Dan, I guess I'm curious though, um, given the numbers we've talked about pricing wise, it doesn't seem like this is, um, like a bargain for us. It's not, this is just the going rate, right?
Absolutely. I mean, it's, if we did our own contract, I, I can assure you that. Let me take that back. I'm fairly confident that, uh, the pricing would be substantially similar to this.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, I, I, I think we all understand. Is there consensus to move this forward? I'd be fine with moving it forward. In my view, the more you get paid, the better off you are. But if there are, you know, the majority consensus, let's just move along. So Dan Stuck, sharing a screen, please.
I, I'm not for moving this forward at this point. I, I just don't know where this fits in the priority and I think. Uh, there are other, other areas in the village that need. You know, a lot more attention faster than this. And I would rather, if we couldn't spend the money, trying to have a priority list and, and take care of it that way.
So are you saying we should reallocate this money to another project?
I can't hear you, Tom, one more time.
And we should up, up our asphalt and paving budget by 30,000 to get other work done?
No, I'm saying I don't believe that we should be doing this at this time.
Okay, that, that, I didn't understand your point. Okay, I hear you. Nora?
Yeah, I, I mean, I think, you know, we're only, it's, it's just sort of an opportunity. But it's not, I, I think we should be paving. On a schedule, we've, you know, we've commissioned this report. I think we should be, you know, paving on a schedule and I think the, you know, the argument that it's, that it's gonna. That the good road is going to end is, um. You know, not that substantial because it's going to end 600 feet. Closer on Rockland Avenue. So I mean, I think we should just do all of Rockland at the same time.
Thank you.
All of that section of Rockland.
Victor.
There'll be a big value to get this, the priority, how this fits into the priorities. Then, then we can take, uh, requests like this in a, in a orderly fashion.
All right, so let, let's just move on. There isn't, uh, consensus to move, move forward. Public relations marketing for Army Corps of Engineers, children, flood risk projects. This is. A potential, uh, contract. To. Use a public relation firm to help the village. A, get a, a, an Army Corps of Engineers project done and B, uh, combat. You know, rumors, false, uh, narratives. And, uh, you know, just, just to make sure that, uh, you know, we're getting our story out about the needs of our community and, uh. You know, we're getting our story out about the needs of our community and, uh. What? The grave danger is to the people of this community for doing nothing and what happened on September first and September second. Many of you saw soon afterwards, an anonymous website came out. You know, talking about, uh, you know, negatively about the Army Corps Plan. Uh, you know, that website, which I believe is, uh, you know, a brainchild of some people who are known to us. Uh, is, uh. Untraceable, uh, through what through, uh. Places, uh, out of the community where they're registered. Uh, I I don't think that's the way that you do, uh. Dialogue in a community. Uh, who knows, you know, what reasons they are all, who knows, uh, what what? If if someone has an interest that they're that they're projecting, we don't know that. Uh, if someone has a a a. An interest either monetarily or property-wise, we don't know that. So, you know, I think that. If we're going to get the ball into the goal line this time, you know, we saw what happened in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen. Uh, where the administration, the Trump administration. Copied us at the last moment. And, you know, some of that work would have been done. And might have helped in the last flood. So this is bifurcated into two pro- two sections. Uh, the first is fifteen thousand dollars for phase one. And, you know, I I don't expect us to to jump all of phase two at this point, but I would hope that this board. Could approve the phase one just to to get us started and to make sure that in the next, uh. You know, thirty days, we have a found a strong foundation. To move forward and to advocate as a community and to speak as a community to try and get this project done. Jerry's not here tonight, but, uh, Dan, did I leave anything out?
No, I mean, I think you had, you know, a lot of the, you know, nails around the head. I mean. There is a a lot of skepticism. Uh, about this project moving forward, especially from residents in the community. Uh, you know, I I don't think Senator Schumer is going to announce. Uh, that he got the money if the money's not there. Uh, you know, he's a pretty savvy politician and, uh, he wouldn't. You know, make promises that he couldn't keep like that. Uh, but, you know, I spoke to someone today who, you know. Who lives in the flood zone, they're just looking to, you know. Get their house in a condition so they can sell it. And, you know, I had to, I spoke with him for about, you know, ten minutes, and, you know, this this project's gonna happen. Uh, so I think that's, uh, one of the other barriers that we're trying to overcome. And, you know, as I, as I noted, you know, this this project. Uh, you know, when it moves forward. Uh, and it's not an if now, it's when. It's really going to impact and and benefit some of our most at-risk communities. Uh, as I noted in the memo, if you look at our. Our riverine flood plain and you look at our low to moderate income areas in the village. Uh, and census tracts, they're. The same. So, you know, this is something that's. You know, when this project is done, it's gonna really. Uh, benefit a lot of a lot of homeowners, uh, who who need that. Uh, relief the most. And something that will help, you know, bring that that level of, uh, impact to the village.
And, you know. If you've watched American politics. In the past, uh. Forty years. What you've seen is a constant swinging of the pendulum. Right?
Yeah.
Now the pendulum favors us. But in two years, pendulum pendulum might not favor us. Uh, so I I I don't want to assume. Uh, that the party that I belong to is gonna remain in power forever because I've just been around too long. So I I think it really behooves us to help our residents out by striking when the iron is hot. And I realize the second phase is a is a big bite, so that's why I'm hoping that we could approve the first phase tonight.
And and one other thing, you know, we have, we have an engaged. Uh, citizenry right now. Uh, we have engaged nonprofits. Who are want to help with this, uh, get this project moving. I know, I believe the, uh. Community Resource Center. Uh, is gonna work very closely with the village to, uh, you'll reach out to the to the community. Uh, you, we have bilingual staff, uh, who are ready to help, you know, cut public service announcements. Uh, to, um. Explain the project, help explain the project, uh, community-wide, so.
And it, thank you. And it is a a big item for the Coalition for Community. Uh, they 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 are asking how they can help. And they realize that it affects us, Dan. So nobly pointed out, uh, the 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 map of our poverty rate greatly coincides with the map of our flood zones. Like to hear from the board.
Um, I'm sort of surprised you've got a a a proposal that this fully developed without some previous conversation. Um, and one of the things I'm, I mean, are we trying to convince Mamaronek residents that this is a good plan? Or are we trying to convince the gov- the the federal government to fund this plan?
I I I think.
I think, I mean, I think most residents think some kind of an Army Corps Plan is important. And it's gonna partially solve our flooding problem. So, I mean. I'm concerned that we're spending a lot of money. To combat an anonymous website. I think that gives an anonymous website a lot more authority than it might otherwise have.
Oh.
Um, and I also, but I also. I I I think that this isn't just a two-phase plan. The phase one is to develop a website. But are, do we have the capability of maintaining this website if we don't go on to phase two? And phase two, and, you know, we're we're commit, it's over eleven thousand dollars a month. It's a big ticket item. Or, you know, obviously, the Army Corps Plan, you know, isn't shovel-ready, the the, you know, with, an option has been picked. The Army Corps is looking to, um, evaluate conditions on the ground since two thousand and seven, and they have to actually design it. Before they can build it. So it seems like phase two is gonna take a lot longer than six months. So I I feel like. Committing to twelve, eleven thousand, some, uh, number. For six months is not realistic. It's gonna be more like until the project. Is fully funded and starts. So I think we have to talk about really how how much we're we're committing.
Okay.
I mean, that's my, those are, those are sort of my questions. And, you know, I'm just getting, you know, I just got this on Friday. This is the first I've heard about it, so.
Uh, but I I this this is. What my feelings toward your question, and I'm not trying to negate them, I'm just trying to, you know, have have a conversation about it. As far as, you know, that this is why I talked about just doing the one month. Uh, because to see if it's worthwhile, to see if, uh, you know, if if it's something that it has an effect. Uh, but let me tell you something. If we go down this road. And. There is an effective opposition. And we lose this project. This is gonna seem like a real bad decision not to spend this money. Uh, you know, we're talking about a project that, you know, in in total might cost a hundred million, uh, but only cost the village, you know, uh. Eight million. Right? So to me, this is, this this is a very effective tool to begin. Uh, you know, making a case. Uh, and, you know, it is an anonymous website, but you know, look, I I believe that anonymous website. Is the brainchild of some Village of America, uh, you know, people that we know. And they're relentless. And, uh, you know, and I I believe, and I can't prove it because it's anonymous, that they're, you know, members of the Village of America Democratic Party. And, you know, it 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 seems that way because it's the same discussion I I hear from some members in the Village of America Democratic Party. So, yes, I I have a big concern about that. And, uh, you know, I it 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 would. It would. Not behoove us as a board. And frankly, as Democrats. To allow this to slip through our fingers. At a time when it's almost there. You know, I I. I I, we had this slip through our fingers three years ago. Three years ago, you know, I I I sent out an email on this date. Saying, hey, great, you know, this passed Congress. And, uh, you know, the the administration at the time, you know, put the gabash on it. And here we are, three years later, with no progress.
So again, to my question, who are we convincing?
Yeah.
And what, I mean, how is this going to ensure? That if in the midterm elections, there's a shift in power, we don't lose this project. I mean, I'm just, I'm not understanding.
So.
I'm I'm not understanding how. Spending a lot of money on a PR campaign for something I think all of us think is a is a really important project. Gets us, gets us further towards the goal when the Army Corps is still designing the project.
So Kelly, you hit it.
Well, I I think Dan's been trying to jump in, so I'd rather. Say what he needs to, but then, but then I do have a comment. Go ahead.
So there are really four COGS. Of funding for this project. There's the federal government, uh, cog, there's the state government. Uh, and they're responsible for seventeen and a half percent of the project cost, and then. You have the, uh, the county government who's has the same local share that we do. Uh, so, you know, there are other level, lover. Sorry. Other levels of government. And on a statewide basis, we have to make sure that, uh. Uh, this is included in the state budget, and again, also in the county budget, although, you know, we've received assurances. From Governor Hokel and from, uh, County Executive Latimer, you know, we also. Thought we were gonna get funding for this project many, many years ago. So there there is, there are other levels of. Uh, government and and regional, uh. Things that we need to account for and try and make sure that those promises are kept.
Kelly?
Okay, um, well, I I have a fair bit to say on this. Um, I hope I can keep myself kind of brief. I was struck by, first of all, Dan, starting off, I wish I shared your absolute optimism that this project is going to get done. Um, I I think it's going to get done. But I'm very concerned that there are. There are folks who. Would like to present the case that this community is not behind the project. And there, and and I don't want that to be. Part of a message that gets sent up that that we're there, that we're wishy-washy on this. So I think it's really important that we have. You know, consistent messaging to our public about where this stands and that we are able to answer their questions and and provide, you know. Absolutely what, you know, what's going on. I. I have sat through too many flood committee meetings where, you know, we didn't know where this project stood. Because we, you know, we just weren't plugged in enough to know, you know, what was going on. I think through efforts with. Senator Schumer's office, particularly Meghan Glander, you know, by roping her into some of our discussions. We were able to get the attention and stay at the forefront of people's attention. At, um, at least at Senator Schumer's level, and, you know. He's been terrific at pushing this through. I was struck by, um, the memo we received. With the quote from the Heritage Foundation. I mean, that there could be such misunderstanding about our village. You know. I think it's imperative that we have the kind of resources that can be aware of what's going on. Correct the record about. What this village is about and who it would benefit. And and to just stay on top of things. I I'm a little sticker shocked by the monthly fee. But I, I mean, I really am, but I think the original, the 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 phase one, if we could get that done. And then hopefully run with it on our own, that at least, you know, get this started. I I feel like we are at a critical junct- critical juncture for the Army Corps project. We have support like we've never had before. But at the same time, there is, um. There is some effort to create the appearance of, um, discord and perhaps not support for the project. Nora, I think the way you worded it is absolutely correct. This is going to. Help with our flooding. It is not going to solve our flooding. No one has ever said it would, I mean. God maybe could solve our flooding, but we're dealing with global warming. Not all of our flooding is a result of river flooding. I mean, nothing's going to solve all the villages flooding problems. But this Army Corps project is a big step in the right direction towards a major source of flooding. In our poorest area of the village and. That message and and. The village's. Full support. It will never be unanimous anywhere, but the. I think it's important that we be on top of this now and that we present a message that we are behind this project. And I, I think there are some forces at work trying to undercut that.
I'm not saying we shouldn't present that message. I'm, I I'm I'm kind of questioning what it looks like when we hire a PR firm. I feel that's a little bit disingenuous and phony. I mean, that's my, you know, that's. Like, there's another message about hiring a PR firm because we feel like, is that I, that that just, it's it's like. Do we feel that we can't sell the project? We've gotta have somebody sell it for us. Um, that's one of the concerns, but my other real concern is. What's one month gonna get us? We're gonna get a website. Can the village maintain a website? By itself. I mean, is this, is this reasonable? And it's it's it's, and if it's, if the village can't maintain a website by itself, then it's then phase two is gonna go on forever. It's not a six-month phase. It's a, it's like the gas theory of consulting. Phase one of the project is ten thousand dollars, and if the client doesn't gas. You just say, oh, that's for phase one, and you go on to phase two. So I'm just worried. Um, I I, and the sticker shock is like a really good suggestion. I mean, are we gonna get all the money back from FEMA? This is, you know, this is a lot of money, and I think. How many villages hire PR firms? It's, it just seems like a not transparent way. Of conveying the importance of this project. I think it could be looked at in two ways.
I I think the transparency is happening right here tonight because we're talking about the offer. I think the communities have done that. I think that, you know, communities present themselves for, uh. Uh, you know, tourism through the offer. I think they do it, do it all the time. Yeah, I I, they, you know, New Rochelle has done it for development, you know, i- it it's a way of getting your message out, you know. District government. In this country. Is endemic. No one trusts government. And that is what the people who who live in the dark web and run anonymous, uh. Websites depend upon. They don't have to destroy everything. They just have to throw a couple of wrenches into works. You know, they don't have to be factually accurate. They could be, I don't know, it sounds right. You know, that's like, you know, there's a whole industry based upon that now. You know, there's there's QAnon, there's Fox News. This is all about not having facts. It's about, it feels, it feels like it could be right, so I'll say it. So that's what we have to come back, day after day after day. You know, we saw it at the beginning of this, folks writing emails based upon what they read on somebody's website. And the information was, you know, wrong sometimes, half information, uh, you know, conjecture. Uh, the the ability to try and scare people by, oh, it's a hundred million dollars. You know, they don't say it's a hundred million dollars, but our our shares, you know, would would only be seven and a half million dollars. So we get a project a hundred million dollars for seven and a half million dollars.
I think our share is higher than seven and a half, Tom. I think our share is higher.
Percent. Our share, seven and a half percent. Dan, am I wrong?
It's it's, I hate to correct you, Mr. Mayor, it's eight point seven five percent. But, um, you're one of the reasons why we, this was the preferred firm is they do have experience working with municipalities. They have worked with. Uh, the city of Piggles, they work with Westchester County. Uh, they've worked with some, uh, you know, municipalities in the Midwest. They worked with the city of Los Angeles. Much, that's a much larger. You know, municipality, but, uh, you know, that was one of the. Uh, the factors that weighed heavily into the thinking that this was a preferred firm. Was their experience with municipalities, was their experience with not-for-profits, extensive, uh, experience in Westchester County with. Uh, those types of agencies, uh, and they do have connections in Washington who can. Help keep a surprise of any, you know, upcoming or ongoing developments. Uh, with the project. And I think one of the mayor, the things the mayor suggested was, and I think, you know, trustee Westrop may have echoed this was. Uh, you know, there's. The phase one and phase two. Uh, you know, I think the mayor was, she actually just moving forward with phase one at this time. Is that correct?
That was my, that was my suggestion.
Yeah.
I I just want to point out, Nora, I, if if it were fifteen thousand dollars just for a website, I would share your concern about maintaining. I, I just want to point out, Nora, I, if, if it were fifteen thousand dollars just for a website, I would share your concern about maintaining it. But it's also developing a brief messaging plan, it's a social media campaign and it's meetings and events. And I think all those things could be really extraordinarily helpful to our community in understanding what's going on. And continuing to grow this base of support so that the community can then, I would hope, take over and really push this. To the, to the finish line. I just think fifteen thousand dollars to get us really moving and, and solidified right now is not a lot to pay.
But it's fifteen thousand dollars, I mean, if we do phase one, can we do phase two by ourselves? We have no, do we have staff do that? That's, we don't have that guarantee, I mean, we don't have that guarantee. And I would hope that we would be able to have a good enough working relationship with the Army Corps to keep abreast of what's going on. That should be something we should be doing. Tom made a very good point today at the summit that he's not an engineer, none of us are engineers. And that we shouldn't be the people talking about this aspect of the project. And I don't know that these PR people are engineers either. I mean, I think this is really, this comes from the Army Corps and the Army Corps is the group that can tell us what's going on. Tell us how they plan to tweak this project to give more flood protection because that is what they are proposing to do. And they're, they're not ready to release designs yet. So my concern is, we all know that this is a project that's gonna help mitigate flooding. We all know that there's no other chance, I mean, you know, we are lucky that this is our third chance at this. We are lucky the federal government is still interested. We can't possibly accomplish this without leveraging our federal dollars. And we need to work directly with the Army Corps and, and the federal government to make sure we can leverage those dollars. I am just not sure where, where an outside PR firm fits in. And, and I certainly don't think that on an ongoing basis, it's an appropriate use of our, of our dollars. Um, I think we really need to be working hand in hand with the Army Corps. And I think, you know, the Flood Mitigation Committee, um, you know, I don't know what their take on it is. I'd be really interested to know what they think about it.
Our hope is that we can.
We, we're not gonna be not working hand in hand with the Army Corps of Engineers. You know, what, what, what the idea of hiring a PR firm was to get the Army Corps of Engineers plan out in front of people. And show people the facts. This is, you know, they're, they're not gonna be suggesting, you know, the PR firm isn't gonna be suggesting, oh, take down this bridge. So you, 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 you reference what I said, but you, you misconstrued it. They're, they're not gonna be, uh, you know, talking about engineering fixes. They're gonna be talking about the Army Corps of Engineer Plan, why is vital to this community, uh, talking about the people that it affects in this community. Uh, and talking about how we need to get it implemented, that's what this is about. Uh, you know, in the nineteen eighties, the village almost had a plan. And everybody was on board, the village board pulled out.
Because it was, they decided it was too expensive. Yeah, but I mean, but, I mean, I guess I.
I, I, I wonder how many of them would feel that way after seeing what's happened in the past thirty years.
I guess my point is, do we need an intermediary to have the Army Corps come and talk to the public? Do we need an intermediary to do it? And are we realistic in saying that fifteen thousand dollar, you know, plan is all we need and that we can take it from there? Or are we gonna, or does that fifteen thousand dollars, is that money that won't have been well spent if we don't subscribe to the monthly? Eleven thousand dollars, which, you know, realistically, we're not gonna be ready in six months because the Army Corps hasn't designed it yet. And the Army Corps is still evaluating, you know, changes on the ground. So, uh, that's, I mean, I think, I, we have to figure out what we're really discussing. And is it just fifteen thousand dollars or is it, you know, years worth of a eleven thousand dollar monthly nut?
And so.
So our, our hope is that the majority of the work can be done within this one month period. You know, right now, we have a half-time or part-time employee as our Public Information Officer. That's, he cannot, you know, he cannot start this process. But, you know, we, we wanna get this process started. Uh, we believe that the majority of the work can, they can be done in the first month. I think that's why the mayor suggesting, you know, just moving forward with the phase one. And, you know, leaving the phase two as either a separate discussion. Or, you know, we'll come back that one if we need to. But I think, you know, we wanna see what happens, at least with the, the phase one first, because I think. Uh, as a staff, we believe the majority of the work that they, that we need to help, uh, you know, promote this project. Uh, get the proper, uh, you know, good information out there about what the benefits of the project are, what it entails. Uh, not, not specifics, not, you know, like, not, uh, you know, what the hydraulic flow of the Maric River is gonna be after the, after the project. But, you know, the, the real nuts and bolts, uh, you know, the, the human side of, of the story.
I mean, just what the, just what the logistics are, just, you know, what the process is, I think that would be beneficial for people. What the time framing is, what's the Army Corps doing now, when is, you know, what are the benchmarks? What are the work product dates, what are the deadlines? You know, we have someone from the, from, we have the, the chair of the Flood Mitigation Committee who's on now and has raised her hand. Do we, could we let Peggy speak?
Just one time, I'll allow it, yeah.
Thank you, Tom, thank you, everyone. Just from past meetings at the Army Corps over the years. Um, I remember being at a meeting downtown and they did discuss with us the need to have a PR campaign. My only question is, is this a little premature? And has anybody discussed this with the Corps to find out if this is the appropriate kickoff time or it should be done a little bit later in a schedule? Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Peggy.
Thank you, I'm, I'm glad, Peggy, may I be recognized?
Go ahead.
Yeah, I'm glad you brought that up because that was gonna be my point. I, I was, I was, uh, on the board as, as this project got to the last phase. And was presented in Washington precisely to get over, to get over the final approval. And as part of that final approval, it, it included the discussion about community support. And that, at that time, all the, all the story, the, the, the stories of past flooding. And what had happened, oh, seven, I just, just moved into the village. And that, that, at that time, we crossed that threshold. So we convinced them that, that the government, that we needed. And, and the board that had to approve this was convinced it passed, that's the point. That the, what, what could happen in the future is as the project gets finally approved. And into this process, you'll be have another time to, to look into some, um, of this kind of PR. But I think at this time, it, it is, it is premature. Uh, I agree with, and, and don't, that does, cannot be understood as against. Or solving or slowing down the process, I actually think that they, I agree with everything that has been said in trying to move this forward. Precisely, one of the reasons I really joined the board, reading all those NIPA documents early on. And really getting to that threshold point because it was really a technical work at the last minute and Dan was there. It really became an effort of the village manager. He had a lot to do with it. Uh, uh, after a big divide of, of the community, we, everybody got together. The boards came together by presenting that united front at that precise moment in Washington. Things, things move forward and also we had some, some of our residents, the chair of the board at the time. I don't know if it was Mr. Spad, no, actually, it was, it was, um, it was Tony Galver who pulled this together and Tony and Mr. Spad came. Um, Bertha Bernie came, and you really had, uh, uh, you know, the, that combination of, of trustees, management. Citizens and New York State solid behind. So I, I think the point is, this actually, at this point, may be even more confusing. Because if we have an approved project, it's all about funding. And I think that is way, well underway now. Uh, the other issue of PR is separate and I think computing it now, so I really don't support this at this time to wrap it up.
Okay, fine, I just, I just wanna, uh, point something out though, is, is that. This, the negativity that this will engender is gonna be played out on social media. And I know the four of you aren't really on social media and I, I actually commend you for it because it probably keeps you a lot centered and it keeps me. But that means that I'm gonna be out there doing it. Because I'm the one that's playing whack-a-mole constantly with people who are, you know. Making, uh, wild comments, people who are, who are, you know. Putting negativity into the process, people who are anti-government, uh, people who are constantly trying to. You know, pit one group of people against another group of people and just to not get things done. And, and that is the reality of government today. Uh, and, you know, it, it, it gets into the sinews of a community. And if, if you're not on top of it, it takes root. And, you know, this negative dialogue starts to slowly drip, 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 drip. Into the conversations and, you know, it, it, in my opinion, just to, you know. This is how you can get people voting against their own economic interests constantly. Uh, and, you know, there are some people who are very good at it. Uh, I, I'm imagining, you know, I'll, I'll, I'll ask trustee Natchez, but I'm imagining that there isn't. Consensus to move this forward to a regular meeting, but I, I would like to discuss it when Jerry's back, uh, in two weeks. Trustee Natchez, are, are you, am I right, you don't have the consensus to move this forward to a regular meeting?
I'm not for it at this point in time. Uh, the Army Corps of Engineers, as I understand it, has asked for a year to design the project. Uh, and to evaluate, uh, what happened with Ida as part of that design. Uh, maybe to tweak it. Um, I don't, I don't see that we get value for the money that we would be spending. Uh, and I think if we needed that, uh, this is the wrong time. We had, we, there is the momentum there, it is going forward. I think that's what we need to concentrate on. I don't think, unless you're doing a long-term thing, you know, it's not gonna, you know, you can't, you know, it's a waste of money. And I don't think that this is the right time to start it.
Okay, uh, I, I've said everything I needed to say. Uh, let's.
But the only thing I would suggest is, and I, you know, I thank Peggy Jackson for, you know. Has been lobbying for this project for a long time, so I think she's got her, she's got a finger on the pulse of, 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 of the situation. That we work with the Army Corps and see if we can do another information meeting because there hasn't been an information meeting since two thousand sixteen. And I think, you know, let's, I think we should engage with the Army Corps, the Army Corps can tell their story, they're part of the story. Um, and what they are gonna, what they're doing to help the village, because I think that's compelling. And I think that's something that the residents need to know and should know.
All right, let's move on. Let's go back to the regular agenda. We get back to my question regarding K, which would have a date of February. Which we then move it back up in the agenda. Okay, you know, just to have some, uh. Continuity and some clarity, at the beginning of this meeting, uh, trustee DeFor took issue with. Uh, the item I wanted on, under old business, uh, being under old business. Because he, he felt that it should be on new business because you, we had dealt with it at the last meeting, right? So I said, okay, let's move it to new business. So what happened here is, this was taken off because we, we had a process of hiring a full-time village attorney. That process didn't work out, that doesn't mean you get to go back to square one. That means the process starts all over again. So this date should be the date when you ask to have it reintroduced, not the date where it was originally introduced. And the process was, was gone through and, you know, interviews were had, ads were placed, offers were made. Offers were denied, this isn't the same, this is something new again. And to, 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 to say, you know, from what happened at the beginning of this meeting and to then allow that to happen now. Is, is a total lack of, uh, you know, clarity and honesty. Tom, I understand your venge point. The, the item on the agenda has always been full-time village attorney. And that, and that's the same item that is on the agenda and has been for months. And, and it was taken off, Dan, after we. Yeah, listen to me, after we went through a process, when we agreed upon a process and we put out ads, we didn't talk about it anymore. It was off the agenda. That process didn't bring the fruit that you were hoping for. You wanted it reintroduced, it should be reintroduced under new business.
I think it was reintroduced under new business, we just don't know what the date was.
Well, it definitely wasn't February.
I don't know what the date was.
Okay, so can we move on with the agenda then?
I, I respectfully disagree with you, Tom.
Okay. I, I appreciate.
This is how everybody else feels.
Okay.
We could, there's a way track to track when this was put on the agenda, you can guess, ask, uh, for some help. Get it to us, whenever you can get it to us. Dan can help us.
Yeah, I'll, I'll get that information to you tomorrow.
Yeah, this is moving the meeting right along, uh, let, let's just go to the last thing. Uh, what's the oldest on the agenda? April twenty-sixth? Is that the oldest on your agenda?
I think so, yes.
Okay, enforcement of multiple dwelling law, I don't wanna.
We, we spoke about this, I believe it was the, the work session in August. Uh, at that time, I think trustee DeFor asked for some additional information. I was working on that, but then the flood's hit and kind of delayed me for a little bit. So, uh, I'd like to, uh, revise and update this memo for the next work session with the Board's deference.
I think part of the question is, we have it on the books as a law. It was not enforced, uh, from what I understand, from what I can go through. For six twenty, West Boston Post Road, one twenty-eight Library Lane, one forty-five Library Lane, one thirty East Prospect. One seventy-two East Prospect, at least that's what my review has suggested.
Dan, would you mind repeating those addresses from my notes?
Six twenty, West Boston Post Road.
Thank you.
One twenty-eight Library Lane, one forty-five Library Lane, one thirty-nine East Prospect, one seventy-two East Prospect. I, I may be wrong, but I believe that that is correct. That there has been no determination on those things regarding multiple dwellings. And I don't understand how we can pick and choose. There are, and I understand and agree with you, Dan, there are things in the multiple dwellings law. That are not as up to date and as stringent as the building code. Uh, and when you have that conflict, you, and you enforce the, the most stringent portions of all the things that apply. But we're not, we're just ignoring, and there is an email from our building inspector saying that it's called under review and waiting for board action. I don't understand that.
So.
Because the only person who's brought it up to the board is myself.
So I, I did speak with the building inspector on this. And what I suggested as a way to, uh, address this as, when someone submits an application. And, uh, plans, uh, where they do their zoning analysis. They do a, a similar analysis of the multiple dwelling law. Or the applicable sections of the multiple dwelling law and how they compare to the, uh, New York State Uniform Fire Prevention and Building Code. And require that they, uh, comply with the more strict standards.
Dan, then, uh, Natchez, can I ask you, how did you do this review? What was the process you used for your review?
For years, I've attended most, most of the planning board meetings and zoning board meetings and have followed development, uh, you know, through this. And so, uh, these are things that, you know, um, I'm aware of what was developed. And going back through, uh, discussions, um, it's not, it's, it hasn't come up. It's, you know, so the question is why?
Did you have these?
The issue is either we should be or we shouldn't be.
Well, I'm not sure how you came to the conclusion that we didn't. I don't understand the research.
I have found nothing, you know, in the, in the meetings that I went to and in the review of documents that I've seen that would give me any indication that it's been done.
Well, as far
The question is, has it been done? It hasn't been done. Our attorney has said that it is, it is, there was, it's always been, you know, enforced. Or that, that, I believe, Bob, that's what you said at the last meeting, that you didn't, you were not aware of anything where it was not applied.
Please, please be clear about what I said.
Okay, maybe I misunderstood. I don't mean to put words in your mouth.
As I related, one incident, one property with respect to which I'm familiar, where the termination was made that it did not apply because of the configuration of the property. As far as the other sites you mentioned, I don't know what the building inspector did. And I don't know the building inspector. If he does review for compliance with the local dwelling law, produce a document in that regard. I don't know how he handles it. Kelly, have you heard it?
Do, because I'm, I'm really trying to understand this issue. I mean, I highlighted, I'm making notes. I'm really trying to understand this. And Dan, you mentioned an email from the building department saying that it's under review and before the board. Did I hear you right?
Yes.
Can we get that email as part of backup? I know Dan Sonoff is working on additional things. I don't know what that email is. Can I, I just, I'm curious about the context of it.
No problem.
Thanks.
I just don't know. Has the building inspector said he's not enforcing it?
Yes. At least that's how it reads, at least how I read it. So everybody can decide for themselves. I'll make sure that it gets
Whoa, 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 back up. The question was, has the building inspector said he's not enforcing? Not how you're reading it? I'm asking, did he say that?
I don't have the email, the exact words, but the answer, my, my answer to your question is yes.
So what, what are we doing here? Are we talking about repealing this?
No, I'm not, I, I That's nothing to do with any individual. It has to do with, with the process for the village. That's all.
It's interesting. I didn't say anything about an individual. I never said that. I never intoned that. I don't know where you're getting that from. Dan Sonoff's memo seemed to suggest that the multiple dwelling law isn't applicable to our community. Dan, is that right?
It's, I've said that it's, it was adopted at a time when it applied to cities of 300,000 or more, which is still technically the case. Which at the time was New York City, Buffalo and Rochester. Because they've lost so much population, Buffalo and Rochester no longer have more than 300,000 residents. And New York City has its own code. It was adopted at a time before there was a standardized uniform fire prevention and building code. It was adopted at the time before there was, there were adopted zoning codes in many municipalities. So, you know, our, and trying to compare the two is very difficult. And that's why I kind of laid out what was included in each one. But, you know, the, the staff recommendation has been that it be rescinded.
But, but I think, just so Tom understands, the village didn't adopt it in the twenties.
No, the village only
In 2012, 14?
I know. I'm aware of it, yeah.
And in order to adopt it, we rescinded the multiple, what was it, something, we rescinded something else.
Um, I, yeah, my, my recollection and I may be incorrect, was that we adopted it at the same time that we, we adopted our building code to reference that we enforced the latest version of the New York State Fire Prevention and Building Code.
But there was, there was another code. It might have been called multiple residence law.
Okay, yeah, there was a, there was, there was still
So if, so if we repeal the multiple dwellings law, something has to take its place.
Well, I think it, it does, it's replaced by the fact that we already enforced the New York State Fire Prevention and Building Code. And we have our own zoning code. So that, I think that's why we felt it was, again, superfluous to what's already in effect right now. It's, it's, it's a, it's a different legal environment than it was in the 1920s. You know, we had
Victor had his hand up.
Yeah.
Okay, we're, we're back to the original discussion, which is probably, I think we were way past that. Where we, where we left it was staff was going to identify those areas that would need to be replaced. Because this discussion has been on for five years on and off. We've never nailed it. What is really necessary to remove from what we have and insert, because there has to be some safeguards for certain conditions in multifamily. So that is, what was the task? And I just think, going back to just, we are doing this, not without knowing, it's really a waste of time. We really need to just to move forward to see what exactly will be replaced. Once we know what's replaced, the multiple dwellings law will be, will be repealed in sections XXX and X. That is the information we need in front of us.
And that was what we were trying to do after the last meeting, but I know. That's, what is it? I believe it was Einstein who said, is men make plans and God laughs.
Right, right. And my, my, my point is simply to go back to where we left it. And I understand all the pressure and all the things that are necessary. So, so let's just move on from that spot and not go back to again, this was, I remember five, four years ago, my first board, this was one of the items. And we never got to that point. It comes on and off every, every six months, every year, every two, I don't know. But, but we, we just need to be proactive.
I agree with you, Victor, but trustee Natchez, who put this on, I think his, his idea was that it was unequal enforcement. And I just wanted to get to that. Because that's what he was trying to allege. We should look at that. But Dan, I look forward to your next work on this.
Thank you.
Oh, you're welcome, buddy. The next one is from April 26th also.
So we're putting, this will be on
Be on next
If, if, if Dan's ready. If Dan's ready. He's got a lot in his plate.
If, if it's not ready, Dan, leave it on the agenda right next to it. Needs more time.
Okay.
Next one is F, 1F, use of public funds on private property. Well, my question is, where does this happen?
Hold on, I need to recuse from this. So I'm stepping out. Give me a call or a text when you're off, okay?
You gotta say why you're recusing.
Oh, because I live on a private road. Thank you.
So I think the same. We were looking for staff backup on this for, and, and it's, again, you know, that was I think sort of stymied by all the storms.
Yeah.
We were looking to see what the policy was.
I mean, I don't think we've ever really had a policy because, you know, you're not supposed to use public funds on private roads. So you know, there have been a couple of memos that were created over the years, which I, I think the board has seen from, I think there was a memo from one of the former, foreman or superintendent DPW to Mr. Faroli, who was the village manager at the time, identifying some of those private roads. But, you know, as a general rule, we, we don't, we don't spend money on, on private roads. Unless we have some sort of easement agreement to maintain a public utility.
Yeah, that's, that's correct. I just wanted to clarify. It's the restriction is on using public funds for a private purpose. Typically, when you do something on private property, it's generally for a private purpose. But there are situations where for a public purpose, you can do something on private property. For example, if you have utility lines that serve residents, you can have those on public property, private property. The question is a private use, a private purpose, not explicitly private property versus public property.
And just for that, you know, we have our public, our property maintenance code whereby we can go in and maintain a property, a prior property if it has violated the property maintenance code. I think there was an issue with, on Shore Eaters Road a couple of years ago, where there was a house that was burned very severely. And the owner abandoned the property. And after being directed to tear down the house, he didn't do it. So we did it and prison lien on the taxes. So there, there are limited circumstances where, but it's always been for a public purpose.
On North Berry too, you did.
Oh, yeah.
Dan Natchez, go ahead.
The purpose is to set a policy. And there, in, in the backup, there is a draft policy. That I, that I suggested. The question is, do we want to set a policy or not? And if so, is this the right policy or should, do we need to tweak it? That's, that's, that is the intent of the issue of this being on the agenda.
What, what would your policy cover?
I, I think the policy that I wrote is very clear.
No, it isn't. Would it cover water?
It would cut, it would cover any work that, any work that is done on a private road would have to be paid for by those, by the people on that road or on that property. So if, 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 if there is in the example that I think you're getting to, you would create a benefits district for if it's on a particular property, you know, such as Dan referred to. You know, in terms of derelict house or whatever, you charge the property. You know, and you can do a tax lien against it or whatever, whatever, whatever the approach is necessary to, you know, to make the policy meaningful. That, that is, that, that's the intent. If people want it, fine. If they don't want it or want to tweak it, that's fine too.
But a derelict house is different than a public utility. As, as Bob began this by stating that a public utility serves a public purpose, fire prevention, health and health and welfare. But, but, I, I believe that this stems from what happened on Flagler Drive. And, you know, that has already been litigated and the village has already won this. So this seems like an end around to our court success by helping the litigants who are suing this community over exactly this issue. And this is exactly the relief that they sought. We've already won that case. It seems to me that you're advocating for the people who are suing this community and to get the, you know, the outcome that they want. And what I'm concerned is how this would affect our residents who live on private streets, who pay full freight for water, who pay full freight for gas, who don't get any, you know, break because they're on a private street. They don't own the water system that goes into their house. We own the water system that goes into their house. We don't want to have people have private water systems connected to our public water systems. There's a, there's a health department reason for that. So I, I just, I, I find this incredible that after losing a court case, and please don't tell me this has nothing to do with it. Because that beggars belief. That you would then, you know, ask to have, basically have that court case overturned by a village policy. Go ahead, Dan, you got your head up.
You don't want to hear it, but I will tell you, it has nothing to do with a court case. And I'm not going to get into a discussion of the court case, one way or the other. There's nothing to do with it. It has to do with the policy and representing the taxpayers of this village. And whether or not we are doing things in a way that I think is fair and equitable to everybody. And that, you know, there are, there are opinions from the controller, opinions from the attorney in general, that I believe what I've drafted follow. And that, and that is the purpose and the sole approach that has been used here. If so, if people want to have a policy, yes or no. Very simple. If this is the right one, fine. If there should be a better one, fine.
Victor?
Actually, I was gonna pick it right there. I thought our discussions earlier indicated, and even village deputy manager said it's good to have a, it's good to have a policy, because we don't have one, right? So, I'm gonna forget, I, I don't want to put words in your mouth, Dan. Anyway, let's, let's just agree. We discussed that it would be interesting, important to have something on, on, as a policy. Then we went through them, I believe. And if there's any, any concerns about any specific one, why don't we just clear that out and move forward?
Okay, then why don't we exempt all public utilities? The village has a responsibility to maintain the public utilities that it owns. We own those pipes.
So say village public utilities.
Yes. Or public utilities.
Make it clear, it's village public utilities to avoid any is there any problem with that legally, Bob?
Bob?
We can go through the list. Is there any legal issue with those, with the list that's there?
I'm sorry.
The policy, the policy kind of lists certain things that may have some legal consequence, legal repercussions. So I'm not asking you if, if, if it's okay, then, then give us that, okay? If you need more time, give us look at them. I would suggest, of course, if all the, all, all others on the board agree. But, and of course, if there's something that's sensitive, you can tell us in a confidential way. But I think it's an open discussion at this stage of, you know, what would be the right policy that fits the legal framework?
I, I, well. You asked me an initial question and then there was further discussion. The question was, could you exempt public utilities? I think the answer was yes. But the, as I've said at the beginning, I think the way this resolution is drafted draws the false distinction between the use of private, with regard to the use of private property. The legal distinction is not about the use of private property. The legal distinction is about the use of public funds for private purpose. That's the distinction. And so I, I think the way this is drafted, if, if you're, what you're trying to do is follow the constitutional obligation not to use private funds for public purposes, this doesn't accurately state that. That's, that's my, I said that earlier, so I wouldn't, I don't mind saying it again.
Question is, how can we amend this to, to fit that legal, proper legal definition?
See, I think the problem is that you can't imagine every situation where it might be necessary to use public funds to serve a public purpose but involving private property. I think there are, I, I, I think you can address things like if you don't want the village to plow snow on private roads. I, I think you can say that without too much of a problem. My concern is with a general policy that addresses situations that you can't be, you, you can't be prescient about. I, I guess what, what, what I'm concerned about too is what problem is currently occurring that we are trying to fix? Oh, I mean, what, what's the genesis? I mean, I, I believe the genesis is antipathy to the folks in Flagler. But besides that, if that's not the genesis, then tell me what the genesis is. But besides that, if that's not the genesis, then tell me what the genesis is. Where is this happening? Where is this occurring? That we need to spend time and energy on this. Where has the public money been spent? Show me, show me the money. That, that really, I mean, what, what are we doing here?
As I understand it, and I believe that there has been public money spent in, for instance, snow plowing of certain roads that are private. You have a list of private roads, the village allows, you know, parts or all of them. You have, you know. The issue is, we don't have a policy. I believe we should have a policy. If Bob believes that there is a better way of stating it, then we have a draft and he can play with it and come up with something better. The, the whole point is to, you know, that to make sure that what we are doing is correct. And in can, you know, and in conformity with what both the, uh, Controller's Office and, uh, Attorney General's Office have, have, you know, made determinations on, so that we don't run afoul anywhere. Not suggesting that anybody's doing anything, you know, for personal gain. That's not the issue.
I, I, it still hasn't been articulated to me the problem we're trying to fix.
I understand that.
Uh, and, and it's nebulous and it could be this, it could be that. But come on, we know what it is. We know where this came from. So, you know.
Tom, you know.
You know what, Dan, you said it to you blew in the face that this happened because of Flagler. You know, anybody watching this tonight, anybody looking knows that's what happened. And Flagler was a case that we won. And we, we don't want to relitigate it. We don't want to act contrary to our own position, which I believe this does. You know, that's why, you know, for me, at least you gotta do is, you know, absent utilities that are owned by the community, public utilities, sewer, water. I wonder what other utilities we own as a community. But those are the two that pop off at the top of my head. They have to do the health and safety of the whole community.
And that's what I'm trying to, uh, to do. You're, you're entitled to your opinion, but I will state one last time for the record. It has nothing to do with that. With what you've said is my motivation. Uh, you're entitled, you're entitled to have your view and I expect that.
I, I, I believe it strongly.
I, I understand that. You're wrong, but you're, you're entitled to that. And I will support the ability for you to have your review.
Oh, thank you. I'm, I'm sure you're good at warfarin.
So the question is, does the board want a policy or not? That's very, very simple.
You know, I think tonight we're talking about things that, that are holding us back and things that are wasting time. And I think this is one.
I did on a policy at our last conversation about this, which according to my notes is, was July 26th. I think we decided we needed a policy on July 26th. So I'm not quite sure why we're having the same discussion again. Uh, but I think that's, that's according to my notes, that's what we decided in July.
Was that there?
So what I would like to suggest is maybe Bob, if you feel that this is not making the legal points correctly, if you have some suggestions, we welcome them and we can go through it at the next meeting.
Is, is there, is there consensus to add utilities as an exemption? Victor? Yeah, Victor's found it. Nor you found what adding utilities as an exemption?
I don't, I mean, I don't know. I want to know what the ramifications of that are. I mean, I don't know. Is that, is that like a blanket exception? I don't know. I, I, I don't, I haven't thought about adding utilities as an exemption till now. So I don't know. I have to, I, I don't know. We'd have to get information from Bob about it.
Bob, can you provide us that information for the next meeting?
Um, I'm not. I'm not sure what it is. I'll be happy to provide you what you want. I'm just not sure what it is you want. If what you're saying to me is draft a policy that conforms to the constitutional limitation on not spending public funds for a private purpose. I can do that, but it's not going to add much to what the law already is.
Okay. But, and, but also, uh, uh, there needs to be a specific about, you know, not, uh, exempt, a, a specific exemption for utilities.
Okay, is that, is, is you want a policy that that, uh, follows the constitutional limit and exempts public utilities?
Yes, which, which I believe is, is the law.
And trustee Natchez mentioned some opinions by the controller and the attorney general. And we can find those, but if you have them and can send them, trustee Natchez, that would be, that would help us along, make it a little easier for us.
I think I sent you the ones that I had before, uh, months ago. And you said you already had them, but I'll be happy to try and take them up again.
Thank you.
Yeah, the same ones that Sue McCrory said. You can just look at that file, Bob. They'll be right there.
I, I don't know.
Yeah, I'm sure.
That I can't give you an answer to.
Okay, but they are, Bob, you can look right there. It'll be right there, right on top.
So is that the board's direction? You want us to come back with a revised policy?
Yes.
Thank you.
Our policy is constitution.
Of course.
Okay. So that was the 26th. This will be a lot easier when it's in order. June 10th, use of American Rescue Funds. Let's wait for Jared for that one.
Okay.
Okay.
Someone letting trustee Winston know to come back? I don't have.
Long, because the next one I want to talk about. The next one is timely too.
The next one is what?
Timely, because there's a border control. Hey Kelly, get back on the screen, please. Uh, the next one, according to my reckoning, I reckon, uh, is the border control sharing agreement, uh, for June 28th that was on. Okay. That is item 1H.
Oh, good. That's a thick one. Okay, what, what are we on now?
Okay. 1H. All right, let, let, let me just. Let me give you a broad picture, right? From time immemorial, what has happened with the Village of Mamaroneck funds? There, there are two pots of money. There's a franchise fee, which is 5% of the total that the two cable companies take in. The border of control receives that 5%. They use the lion's share to fund LMCTV. Now, all of that money used to go to LMCTV up until, I think it was like 2010, when the financial crisis rocked everybody. At that point, the three municipalities started taking funds. They started taking 300, I think it was $350,000 and dividing it between the three communities based upon, uh, the census of 1980, which is what the sharing agreement refers to. Okay? Okay, so that's been happening, but the, the, the pot has been decreasing, right? It, it rose for a long time. Now it's decreasing uh, that we get from the franchise. Now, put that on the side. On the other part of money is $65,000 that each cable company gives the board of control each year. So $130,000 comes into the board of control and it's supposed to be used for pegs. The public education and government, uh, funding the channels and, uh, you know, buying capital equipment. So if you see the cameras LMCTV uses, the studio equipment, uh, now they have a van and various, uh, you know, th- th- this money was at one point going to be used to renovate the firehouse, right? But that, uh, wasn't really by. Okay. Now, over the past few years, the distributions to the three communities have been going down because we're trying to build up some surplus to hire a lawyer to renegotiate the two franchise agreements, which is, uh, timely right now, right? I'm, I'm not speaking out of school here. The, the village of Larchmont has not wanted to lower their share of the franchise fee distribution. Uh, they think it's very integral to their budget. The other two communities have, uh, voted to lower it, so it's gotten lowered. LMCTV has talked about, and in some sense, has had some success with doing more, more fundraising. So they're, they're trying their hardest to, uh, raise that money. So recently, the village of Larchmont, for the first time in the history of the franchise agreement, has said, we won $100,000 from the capital fund, right? No community has ever taken a penny from the capital fund. They, 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 they say that they want to upgrade the lights in their courtroom for better picture, buy screens, da, da, da. My contention is that the village of America did all of that on our own dime, right? But the franchise agreement, you know, which dates back, I think to the early eighties, doesn't really say that they can't have, right? But what it does say is that if there is a distribution of any funds, there has to be a distribution to all communities based upon the agreement. Uh, you know, ratio that was set in the 1980s. So we have not given Larchmont their $100,000 because that would require the village of America getting $250,000. These are round numbers, right? The town of Mamaroneck getting, you know, some, somewhat less, maybe like 180, I forget, I think of the numbers actually came out to, but that's kind of the ratio. We have the most, uh, we have the most subscribers than the town of America and then the village of Larchmont, you know, which, which makes sense, right? Cause the 6,000, 7,000 people in the village of Larchmont. And it's over 20,000 people in the town, in the village of America and about 13,000 in the town. Now, my contention is, is that if that happens and we all start taking this huge chunk of the money that is there for peg funds, it, it, it's, it's hard for me to envision how LMCTV continues into the future. So while Larchmont may be right that they are entitled to it, I don't believe it's the right thing to do. Uh, I, I, you know, especially we saw during a pandemic. And, you know, if, if you are a follower of village, uh, government and town government and the village of Larchmont government, the only way you have to access, uh, information really is LMCTV. That they are integral to the success of this community. They held us together during a pandemic. So that's where we are right now. And I, I really wanted you all to know about it. There, you know, it, it, it's, it's a situation that affects, uh, you know, monetarily all of us. I think that you know, we, uh, you know, I, I, I have been kind of pushing back against this. You know, I don't know where the town is going to be at the end of the day, but, you know, unfortunately, the sharing agreement says, uh, you know, it's, it's a majority vote, right? It's not a weighted vote. If it was a weighted vote, we'd be the only real vote, right? Cause we, we have, uh, I think the population is, uh, greater probably than the town and the village of Larchmont. But I, I, I think one of the things that, you know, I, I wanna, and I don't want this to happen. And I think it would be a shame if it happened, but you know, one of the things that it needs to be broached is, you know, if Larchmont is intent upon doing that, you know, and, 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 you know, they don't see the, uh, utility in the need for LMCTV and are willing to support it, you know, ma- maybe we have to go separate ways in a franchise agreement. And, you know, talk about doing it with the town of America and not Larchmont. I mean, I, I want to offer that to Larchmont as, as an alternative. Because, you know, I, 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 I think that it's, uh, foolhardy to, uh, you know, think that we could, you know, reach out to this community and, uh, inform this community and keep this community involved without LMCTV. And that's important to me. And I know it's important to this board. I know, you know, even the disagreements we have, I know you all care about, uh, community involvement. And, uh, you know, there's, there's no more local paper anymore, you know? When I was first a trustee in 2001 and 2004, we'd be sitting in the courthouse and there'd be three reporters in the front row. Uh, and there'd be stories in the two local papers and a story in the general news about the meeting. And, uh, you know, yeah, to, uh, you know, to, to get a story in the general news now, you gotta pretty much set yourself on fire in the middle of Mamaroneck. Uh, there, there's no more local coverage. So it, it's, you know, and we in the village of Mamaroneck, you know, use LMCTV to great advantage. Uh, you know, we, we, I mean, I, I, I spent a lot of my career fighting long and hard to, to get land use boards televised. And, uh, we're the only community in the area that does. So, you know, I think this is an important issue going forward and I really wanted you all to know about it. And I wanted to tell you all about it. And, uh, you know, I'm hopeful that it won't come to that, but I just wanna, you know, we, we might have to renegotiate the franchise agreement. Uh, renegotiate the, the sharing agreement. And, you know, it's not an easy task and I don't want to do it, but I, I also, you know, think that we have shared goals and priorities. And I just, I'm, I'm hoping you all feel the same way. Because, you know, there is a border control meeting coming up and I'm, I'm gonna have to address this and I wanted to know how you all felt.
I think we have to do everything we can to keep LMCD media hea- healthy.
I appreciate that. Uh, Mr. Natchez and trustee Winston.
Um, I'm confused. On one hand, you said that there's a majority vote that controls. And on the other hand, I think you said that Larchmont is entitled to the money.
Yes, uh, wh- what we found out. And, and I can understand your confusion because it confused me too. What we found out is that there, there, the original sharing agreement, which hasn't been enforced, was literally all the monies will be distributed on a, on a per capita basis, right? So that's, but that's never happened, right? Larchmont is saying, I want my money. Right? I want $100,000. Not, I want $100,000. The controller of the town, who was also the treasurer of the board of control said, if I give you $100,000, I have to give town of America X amount and a village of America X amount. And she said, I will not do that without a vote from the board. So that's where we are. Now, Larchmont, you know, could say, well, that's not what it says in the agreement and I'm going to sue you, right? And they haven't said they're going to do that, but you know, that this is America, right? That's always an option. So that's where I, I can see where your confusion came from, Dan. But that's where the kind of the conflict is, right? First of all, I don't think anybody should be taken out of that key. The, uh, the capital fund key. Cause that's about the future of LMCTV. But the controller feels she can't do that without doing it on a pro, a per capita basis. And the town of America and the village of America have said, I don't want that. And I was waiting until I talked to you guys about it. I hope that that, I know it's complicated. I hope that provides some clarity.
I, 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 I understand it. So there's, there is a potential.
So there's, there is a potential legal issue and a operational issue that are in potential conflict.
Yes, fair enough.
You know, I agree with Nora that LMCTV, I'm sorry, LMCD media is important, you know, is an important asset. And to the extent that we can support them, we should be doing that.
Kelly, thank you. Thank you. Kelly?
Yeah, I agree. You know, LMCTV is this little gem and I just want to protect it, make sure it's okay. Towards that end, I have a couple of questions. One, does Larchmont understand that, you know, this could, they could be, it could be the end of LMCD? Are they willing to just not have LMCD media cover there?
You know, I'm willing to speak for Larchmont. I could say without fear of contradiction, that they don't value it to the same level that we value.
Okay. And I guess this may be just going too far down the road, but if we do have to renegotiate a franchise agreement with just the village and the town, Larchmont just, you know, is willing to walk away from LMCD. I just wonder if there's any possibility to involve other communities, you know, Rye or Harrison or, you know, if there's any possible interest out there to replace Larchmont if we need to.
Well, you know, the, I don't know because it has to do with when the franchise agreements expire and coincide. But I can say this, no other community around here, Rye, Harrison, New Rochelle, even White Plains, which is a big city, you know, bigger city. No other community around here has the level of service that LMCTV media provides to this community. It's not even close.
Right.
Most of them provide a way that if you, if you make something in, you know, your community organization, you can put it in their deck and play it all weekend, right? But they don't provide production value. They don't provide skilled staff. They don't provide the studio space like we provide. It's, you know, it's like a 500 watt radio station as opposed to like, you know, WNBC TV in New York. You know, there's a big difference. They're not playing on the same level. So, you know, but because truthfully, most communities take the franchise fee and do very little to promote public education and government access. This community, from the inception of the first agreement, decided that that was the way to put the money. And I think it did probably help our democracy more than those communities, but, you know.
Yeah, thanks for that.
For the mayor's, to talk about LMCD, it's been a long time since I ran a public access operation. But when I did, a lot of people were bringing in programming, were people who had produced LMCD or giving it to us to advertise. So even a lot of the LMCD programming is being given to public access operations in other municipalities to fill their schedule. Because LMCD is really the only one who does any sort of, has the facility for people to create content.
On that end, I received a franchise offer for Tom Murphy Show. Now. Victor, how do you feel about it?
We still have the question of Larchmont, what they, why they intend that. And I know it cannot be addressed now, but I have, that question is unclear to me. Of course, supporting LMCTV is vital to this community. What else can I, can't say anything further?
Yeah, well, at least, you know, I know how you feel. And I can go forward to the next board of control meeting. And, you know, with the assurance that this board is solidly behind LMCTV and I really appreciate that. But that's, you know, I wanted to bring you all to speed about it. And since it, you know, potentially, potentially has an effect upon the monetary bottom line of the community, you know, you're all entitled to know about it and say your piece. Thank you for giving that opportunity. Okay, that's June 28th, because we got that. The next June 28th, filling vacancy for unexpired terms of trustees. Okay, so somebody wants to say, I'll talk a little bit.
It's Dan, right?
What?
It's Dan who put that on the agenda.
Okay, I think so. I just want to say, to inform the public, how it works right now in every community, village, when a trustee resigns, retires, God forbid, passes away, it's the mayor's responsibility to fill that, to appoint a trustee to fill out that term. That isn't a conflict between the mayor and the village manager. Because, you know, a lot of times when people are trying to take power away from the mayor, they say, "Oh, but this is a village manager form of government." The conflict is not between a village manager and the mayor. The village manager has specific powers that a lot of times in other communities were the mayor's. So the village manager has those powers and he exercises and operate the day-to-day operation of the village. That doesn't mean that the other powers that the mayor has devolved through board of trustees. And that wasn't the intent of the village manager law. It never was. And no other community does this. And, you know, this would require a permissive, a mandatory referendum of the community. And I think it's, you know, it's really a waste of time and it's a waste of energy for this community and it's going to be divisive. And, you know, at the end of the day, I don't think it's going to be successful. I think that history has shown that mayors have appointed people who have done well, especially people of our persuasion. I was appointed to fill a vacancy. Kelly Winstrup was appointed to fill a vacancy. Nick, geez.
Allison.
Nick Allison was appointed to fill a vacancy. All good, honest, true citizens of this community. And I know that if this becomes a board decision, it's going to become involved in Village of Merrick politics. And right now, the mayor gets to decide who, in his view, would make the best trustee and then there's an election. And if people don't like his choice, as has happened, has happened to me, you get voted out. And the people decide, you know, I didn't like that choice. And believe me, it happened to me in 2001. And, you know, you go on, you say, "Thanks for the opportunity" and you move on. But I don't think that this is something that's, needs to be done. I don't think that there's a problem that needs to be fixed. This is a blatant attempt to take away the authority of a mayor that is clear under New York state law. I mean, what's the next? The mayor's not going to be allowed to marry people. If somebody wants to get married in this community, I'm going to have to have the whole board present. I mean, these are, the powers inherent in the mayor's office. But that's my two cents.
My question here is, didn't we already vote this and pass this? So what needs to be done, done to go back? I don't think.
No, we didn't.
Under debate or what is it? I thought it was, it was going to just move forward again, back to where it fell and back in track, on track. I thought that was it. I don't think we just spent time relitigating this, just.
Victor, this was never discussed before. It was never voted on. It was never passed.
We.
No, it was never passed.
We had decided to transfer the appointment, the removal of, well, this board, a previous board transferred the appointment authority for planning and zoning board members to the, from the mayor to the entire board. But they didn't transfer the removal authority. So more than a year ago, maybe around a year ago, we adopted a law that transferred the authority of removing a planning or zoning board member from the mayor to the entire board. And that was supposed to be a referendum because if you're, if you're, if you're taking a power away from an elected official, you have to have a referendum. It's supposed to be a referendum this November, but for whatever reason, it didn't get to the Board of Elections. So now we need to readapt that entire law. That might be what you're thinking about. But in this particular instance, you know, I think it's, it's, you know, villages were typically smaller subsets of towns. You know, in the Town of Merrick, when Tom resigned as a town councilperson to take, because he'd been elected mayor, you know, it was the remaining four board members who chose it. So it's in town law, is, in town law, all of the board of trustees, all of the board of supervisors appoints or appoints a replacement trustee or town supervisor, whoever resigns. Village law, typically, the four remaining trustees would appoint a replacement mayor. Whereas the mayor now appoints a village trustee. You could argue that that's, you know, not very democratic and it would be better if the entire board did it. In cities, it depends on the charter. So we have the option to do this. And in order, if we passed, if this law were passed, it would be subject to a referendum. And we would have to get paperwork in by August. So it would be a referendum for November 2022, a year from now.
Okay, I just want to talk about the genesis of this, just so it's clear. The first time I ever heard about this was when I was interviewing with the Democrats to be renominated for mayor. That's the first time I ever heard about it. And it was a question out of left field. And the next time I ever heard about it was during an email chain of the Village of Merrick Democrat district leaders, where a district leader proposed this. So this is, you know, in my view, you know, a really, a political move from members of the Village of Merrick Democratic Party, who frankly, didn't support my becoming the mayor again. And in light of not being able to remove me, they decided to, you know, integrate the office. And I'm not going to be here forever and I realize that. And I, you know, I'm looking forward to the day of just being a grandfather and, you know, retiring from every job I got and enjoying my life. But I think it's important to protect the integrity of this office. And I think that there have been moves made, you know, we have two laws were passed and this one is proposed, all with the sole purpose of removing authority from the mayor that no other community does. So I know people say, "It's, it don't take it personally," but come on. I was born in the morning, but it wasn't yesterday.
So I think the Village of Larchmont allows the mayor to appoint to fill a vacancy, do they not?
Every village does, Kelly.
So, yeah, so this idea that because we're part of a town, you know, we should follow the town's model. I don't know if that's what you were suggesting, Nora, but that's where.
And I can clarify after, but that's not what I was suggesting.
Okay. Yeah, I, I would hate, I would hate to see the appointment of a vacancy become the mess that so many things tend to become. I think it's simple the way it is. I don't, I, to me, it's like, it's not fixed. If it's not broken, there's no need to fix it. I don't think it's broken.
So the point I was trying to make was that villages are always part of a town. A village cannot exist on its own entity. It can be a co-terminus village and town, or it can be a subset of another town. So we are a subset of two towns. Village of Larchmont is a subset of the Town of Merrick. Villages inherently were smaller little enclaves when villages were first incorporated. And the mayor had more power because it was a smaller pool of people to draw from. So the structure of a village government was different from the structure of a town government. So, and different from the structure of a city government in some respects. And in one of those respects was the way a replacement board member is made. City, it depends on the charter. Town, it's all four surviving board members, the town supervisor and three trustees or the four trustees, depending on who has left office. And in the village, it's the mayor. It doesn't have to be. It can be changed. That's the point that I was trying to make. And I was trying to make the point that when Tom himself left a position as an elected official in the town.
Yes, yes.
Before remaining elected officials.
Yes.
Selected his replacement. That's, that's all. I wasn't suggesting that we have to do it like the town. I was just explaining what the differences are. And, you know, we are, as Tom, Tom says, we have a bigger population than the town. I, I think we're, I don't know quite what the numbers are, but we're not a small little village that doesn't have a lot of people to choose from. So we're not the tip, you know, a lot of villages are, you know, under 1,000 people. We are, we are more like a city. We have different dynamics and different. And I actually think it's more democratic to have the entire board do it. That's my opinion. It's not, it has nothing, it's not personal about Tom. And I would say that the, the other referendum, having to do with the removal of the a planning or zoning board member, is simply when the appointment, appointment authority and removal authority are typically the same. And it was harmonizing. And an error was introduced when the appointment authority went to the full board, but the removal authority didn't. So that was correcting an error that was introduced in 2016.
Well, I take issue with that it was an error. We weren't on a board in 2016. You know, they, they, they might have figured, well, village law gives this authority to the mayor. And they might have figured that that's a good idea. I've seen village boards of five members try and hold a hearing and it was an absurdity. It got the village in a lot of trouble because they hired a hearing officer who was a retired judge who had no authority. And that was with the police hearings.
Well, in any event, you're, that's your opinion. We've had this entire discussion. We voted to change the law. We neglected to get it on the ballot. So we have ample opportunity to have the conversation again.
But when you're talking about it, put it up. In, in, in reference to the placement authority of a trustee. You know, trustee to four, you know, as soon as we had done this already, because we had been down this road so many times before. But we have, we haven't had this discussion before. There hasn't been a discussion about the removal, the replacement authority of the mayor for an open trustee's spot. And I think it's, this is a very important duty of a mayor. And I think that, you know, if, especially since I know the genesis of this came from the Village of Merrick temps, it's going to be a political process. It's going to be, you know, weighed into by, you know, we could already see the Village of Merrick Democratic Party trying to get involved in issues here that affect this board. Have discussions about various issues that we're dealing with to try and put pressure on elected officials. And, you know, I've never seen that before. And, you know, all my time doing this, town, village, county government, doesn't happen. And it's going to politicize the process. And, you know, if the board goes through it, if this is more stuff that doesn't need to happen, that's happening for political reasons.
I think it's more democratic. You and I have a difference of opinion. You think it's political. I think it's a more democratic, fair way of selecting. Of selecting a replacement trustee. That's my opinion.
Okay.
I'm not being influenced by other people. It's what I think.
Dan, Victor?
Oh, I'll second that.
I agree.
Okay. So what do you want to do?
Think we should. I mean, there, there is a law drafted. I think we, I don't know if this law is in a, in a, in a. You know, final form. I think that's up to the village attorney. Who, it trust will figure out whether this is the right format.
So you want to instruct the village attorney on to investigate this? Hey, I got a question. While, while we're investigating, does anybody know any community that does this? You want to be the first?
You know, I don't think it's, I, I don't think we need to be lemmings. If we think it's a good idea. I mean, Tom, I don't know. I guess I could look through all other village, villages and see there's over five hundred. I'm probably not going to do that.
Okay, I just want one. Yeah, I.
I don't know whether what, you know, I, I mean, it's not important to me whether one other village does it or doesn't do it. So I'm not going to invest in that. Um, I don't really know.
Okay, but I, I guess. If I want to be the first to do something, I, I ask myself, why hasn't anybody else done this before?
You know, Tom, Dan made a suggestion. I think it's a good suggestion. It's just, it's, sometimes a suggestion is just a suggestion. I think it's a good suggestion.
When, when there's three suggestions and they all point at the same way, they can, there aren't just suggestions. Sometimes a cigar is just a cigar. I understand.
Tom.
Come on, please, don't play me for a fool. Please, don't do that.
I'm not playing you for a fool, Tom.
Tell me well enough, you know, that I am not. And I, I can see what I can see. Come on. Now, you guys want this to go through the village attorney, to be turned into a law? That's fine. That's your prerogative. You, you have the majority at this time. But that's how you're setting it up. It's absurd. But then that, no, that's, that's, you know, your choice.
I'm, I'm. I'm, it's just, it's dismaying that you have, that you set it up as an us against them situation. The Village of Amerenek Democrats have a majority now. And, you know, it's clear that. Not everybody thinks in lockstep.
No.
People have different opinions.
It's, it's very clear.
Okay to have different opinions.
And that's, but it's very clear to me. That. This will be the third law passed in a year to take away the authority of the mayor. And that's not coincidence. Come on, nobody watching, nobody in their right mind believes that. That, that this isn't, you know, a personal thing. You know, I, I, it's my, you know, belief that you three didn't want me to continue as mayor, and that's fine. That's your prerogative. The community didn't feel that way.
Tom, I'm not sure, you know, I, I don't know what, you know, you're putting words in other people's mouths that are inappropriate.
It's not appropriate, Nora. I, listen, I've been doing this too long to not act like I see, I mean, I said this a few months ago. I am no longer. Going to not point out what is obvious. Because it's not fair to all of us. We can't have a good working relationship unless we're dealing with the truth, at least, you know, our feelings about the truth. And, and, you know, it, it is what it is. You know, I, I'm fine with it. But, you know, this is three times, you know, in a year. I mean, come on. And, and you tell me it's not personal? It's, you know.
I, I just want to take issue with your characterization that the two trustees didn't want you to continue. I think that's out of place. And it's not true. So let's, let's just.
I don't believe it's out of place and it's not true and it doesn't help the conversation. That's not the point here. No, sir. I believe my prerogative to point out what I think is going on here. And, and, you know, that's not a matter of decor. I, I have a right to an opinion, Victor. And, you know.
But I'm just raising my objection to what you said. I'm just, I'm not going to stay silent so that you, what do you say is taken as the truth? I'm saying that is not an accurate representation. So I'm just also expressing, exercising what you just.
I understand.
My view.
And I would say you have every right to your opinion, but you don't have the right to tell me what I think or tell other people what you, what I think.
I'll, I'll, it's true. I'll let other people make their decision. You know, they, they've heard my opinion. They've heard your opinion. I'll let them make their decision. Thank you.
Thank you.
Point, we'll take it. Okay, that thought is true, June. The next up is July, everything from July.
So, I'll see.
Really? Report of the ad hoc and then, uh. Uh, the, uh, Amerenek Avenue repainted.
Amerenek Avenue repainted.
Uh, we're all.
Time for the ad hoc right now.
Uh, following up from the last meeting, you had asked me to. Uh, reach out to the county about, you know, now that we're. Delayed in getting to the Village of Amerenek portion of their project. Uh, what we could do as far as, uh, some, uh, some of these changes. I reached out. I'm waiting to hear back. Uh, Hugh also asked me to follow up with. Uh, Mr. Carmody about the. Some of the work items he's working on. He is looking at the signal. Uh, uh, timing at Waverly, Amerenek. I did ask him to look at the all-way stop. Uh, alternative as well. Uh. There were some other items that we were still waiting on. Other ancillary items to be taken care of. Uh, as far as some of the work around the village center and Amerenek Avenue. With, we, we didn't do any traffic counts around, uh, Washingtonville. Uh, because the old White Plains Road overpass was closed. So that was artificially, that would artificially. Effect the, the numbers. Uh, that bridge just reopened. The end of the week before our last. So he'll get out there soon to start, uh, collecting data on that item. Uh, so those are kind of the major items around, uh. Amerenek Avenue. Uh, you know, we had the conversation about, that's why we're. Uh, the conversation about. Uh, the, the refuge. Uh, by the, uh. The, the curve. Uh, at, uh, Waverly, or just before Waverly and Amerenek. Um, yeah, I think there was, we, we, I told you some of the issues that we have as far as. Uh, because it's not directly in the center of the road. There are drainage issues and then there were the concerns of the fire department, which. Um, I was a little unclear as how that factored into the. Boards thinking and how you wanted me to proceed on that. We'll try to pick it up from that, from that point.
Dan, um, I, I think that the fire department concern is that if there's that pedestrian. Island, that they can't then get out of the station and get. Onto, um. Like down onto Old Amerenek Road, right?
Okay.
So.
Well, it was, they use. It's, it's, use it to back in, plus they also use it. To help merge into traffic when they do need, need to make the left-hand turn out of the station to go south on Amerenek Avenue.
So I just think it's something we need to confirm. Is, is that the case? And is this something, you know, that we can. Modify the island in some way to create more of a, you know, more of a turning radius for the fire trucks? I mean, I don't want to. Block a, a, a. A thoroughfare to fire trucks. That would be really bad. I mean, is this something that Matt would know about? That when he looks at this, he can.
He, he was again. You can look at that, I guess, still the remaining issue is. This issue with the, with the drainage out there, because that would require a. A much different project. Because you'd have to somehow. Build up a section of the road or re-establish a crown in the roadway. To allow for drainage away from that center median as opposed to. Collecting it or having, you have to have some sort of drainage structure there to capture. Uh, any water that gets over there. So it's, it's a little tricky. I mean, I'm.
Uh huh.
Uh, I'm, I'm fairly confident, not that I've ever seen a survey of. Amerenek Avenue, but I'm fairly confident any survey would show that it's. Uh, a lot of stuff under there that we'd have to work around.
But in any case, it sounds like we're waiting for more information on this item.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, I'll.
And I'd ask, um, you to follow up. And I asked whether or not anybody is looking at having a. You know, a four-way stop signal.
Yeah, I said.
I've gotten lots of answered on preferred desires, but not an answer to whether that is investigated and the results of that.
You'd rather, I'd always stop him where, where he am Amerenek.
Uh, between Hoyt and, and I'm not quite, Waverly, Waverly and, um, Amerenek, uh, Amerenek Avenue.
Yeah. Yeah, I've asked Matt Carmody to look at that.
Okay, so we, we need more information.
Yeah.
Okay, this is, so, and you're waiting for the county to get back to you on a drop dead date, if there were to be changes, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
And it, is there any update about the crosswalk repainting?
Um, I can, I, I, I will look into that.
I mean, I know that the, the county and the village have been, because it, it would be the village repainting, even though it's county property, correct?
Yeah, correct. So I'll, I'll, I'll talk to Mark for tomorrow morning.
Yeah, see, even if we have to repaint it after they pave, at least we haven't done it. It's not the fun thing in the world to do.
Yeah, I mean, I think. Get through, get through Amerenek Avenue with a, a street sweeper. Because it's, uh. It's a lot of, uh, silt out there right now and dirt and debris that just. Yeah, all over the place.
Okay, um, let, let's. Let's go to our executive session. Uh. Pardon me. Proposed consent order would save the sound. It is anticipated.
I'm sorry, I'm recusing. I'm going to step out. See you later.
Uh, just a minute, Victor. Don't, don't disappear yet. What, what I'd like to do, Tom, is on the executive session, also get an update from our council on, uh, Sella. I'm not talking about the bond issue. I'm talking about. Payments made and getting in action that was authorized by this board. You know, Dan, I, I would appreciate if, if you have an executive session, I have told you this repeatedly, to put it on the agenda. And not do it at the last second like this, where you are the only person that's prepared to talk about something. I'm, I'm not prepared to talk about it. I'm wanting, wanting an update, period. That's all. I don't have an agenda on it. I want to know, you know. And that's an advice to council. Okay, so that would be for advice to council.
Okay.
Proposed consent order would save the sound is anticipated that a motion will be offered to enter into executive session pursuant to one oh five one day of the New York State Public Officers Law. To discuss matters of ongoing litigation. And we will have an advice accounts. I make, I make that motion.
I'll second the motion.
What we call roll. Trustees, Winchell.
Yes.
Patton.
Yes.
Lucas.
Yes.
Mary Murphy.
Hi.
Or you could get this on for me because it went out.
I will start, just let me.
Okay, unmuted. They're unmuted. Thank you, Jackson, for not going into this.
Hi.
Have you unmuted up there? I don't know. So I want to, yeah, okay. Waiting for a couple of our colleagues. Trustee to four, trustee Winston. Oh. Justy Winston. Okay. Begin the meeting. Everybody get on camera. Okay. Just wait till everybody turns on the TV. All right. First order of business, before we begin the regular session, we have to close the board of trustees work session. We, we had an executive session in which no, no action was taken, no votes were recorded. I'll make a motion to end the work session.
Second.
Or recall roll.
Trustees, Winthrop.
Yes.
Hatches.
Yes.
Lucas.
Yes.
The four.
I don't know if he's really with us.
Okay. May I, Murphy?
Aye. Okay. You know, under the open meetings law, the members of the board have to be present and visible in order for the meeting to proceed.
Well, then I guess we're going to proceed with full members. Trustee before, if you can hear, please turn on your video and your audio. Okay. Okay. I'd like to make a motion. No. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Aye.
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic.
One, individual liberty and justice for all. Thank you all. Okay, I need a motion to open this meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Victor, you have to unmute yourself. Adoption of the agenda and your motion to adopt the agenda for tonight's board of trustees meeting.
Moved.
Second.
Or recall roll.
Trustees, Winthrop.
No.
Hatches.
Yes.
Lucas.
Yes.
Yes. May I, Murphy?
No, because I don't believe this is proper procedure. Communication through board. Five minutes. Time limit. Does anybody have their hand up for communication through board round one? Looking, or you say what? Okay.
A lot of thought?
Yeah, of course.
Go ahead, Jennifer. I mute yourself.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Good evening, everybody. I am speaking tonight on the Prospect Avenue parking issue once again. I, first of all, I'm concerned about why I have not had any email communication regarding the questions I asked about the procedures and protocols. You know, I believe that this is demonstrating a lack of transparency on the part of the village, and I would have hoped for more. As a result of the last meeting, I thought that we would all get on the same page. However, the questions I have raised have yet to be answered, and it's been several months. With all due respect, I understand the flooding took over for a while, but this began well before the flooding issues. You know, regarding the process, I listened to your whole last meeting, and one of the things I repeatedly heard come up is the phrase, "If it ain't broken, don't fix it." And, you know, I do have to bring out that something is broken here. What is broken is that there are no protocols, and there is a need for those protocols to be in place. It would seem to me unfair that a few residents sharing their concerns or complaints and then proposing a change that affects an entire neighborhood and community would be, I don't know how to say, inappropriate, for lack of a better way. In speaking with other residents who live in other parts of our community, not in Prospect and not in the Heathcote Hill neighborhood, many have expressed to me, "Well, if this is the protocol, then they'll just go and they'll complain, and they don't want parking on their street either." So, you know, I find it interesting. Now, in speaking with some of my neighbors, they're sharing that the idea for the whole change in the parking did not come from them, that it came from village officials. So I feel like there's an attitude here of pointing fingers at each other. I'm not sure where it all came from. But I will say this, in reading the report that was published today, or put out on the website today, I didn't see any mention of the line of sight issue that will be obstructed. As you know, we're only one block from the police station, or two blocks. And the police do at times need to go pretty fast down our street, and to no fault of their own, they should. But I believe moving the parking to either the north side, as it's called in some reports, or the west side, as it's called in some reports, is creating a line of sight issue that I believe would be very dangerous on a blind curve. There was no mention of that in the report, and I think that should be looked at very carefully. To date, there have been no accidents, there have been no citations for unsafe driving in the last two years, and there have been no incidents of people entering or exiting driveways. And while adding six parking spaces may seem attractive, the only night in all my 19 years of living here that there's ever a problem of parking is the Fourth of July. And I would say that that night is probably chaotic throughout the entire village. But never has someone had to drive around and around to find parking spaces. So the urgency to add six spaces, I, I just don't see as an urgent need. You know, I just want to conclude with, I would hope moving forward, that the lack of transparency truly improves, from what I have seen. And if there isn't a process for someone to have something changed in the village regarding traffic or things like that, the protocols need to be put in place. So it, and it should be published out for everybody to understand and know the process, so people aren't blindsided as we were this time. I appreciate hearing from some of you or any of you soon regarding this. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Queeros. Mr. Queeros, you can unmute yourself, sir.
I'm sorry. Thank you for bringing that to my attention. I'm on the same subject of transparency. I wanted to ask you two quick questions, which has a lot to do with the visibility of the fiscal negativity of our village, and the effect it's going to have predominantly on people. The first one is, why isn't the new lawsuit that was filed from Elizabeth Fajadna, I may be pronouncing her name wrong, I'm sorry, on the village website yet, and with the ABC property lawsuit, which the village lost? So why are we wasting tax dollars appealing this? I'd like a response to those two concerns. Well, there are, there are many, but I'm limited as to time.
Yeah, if, if the new lawsuit isn't on the website, Sally, could you put it on tomorrow morning, please?
And the appeal?
If, if whatever is missing from the website, please put it on.
Yeah, but that doesn't answer the question. Why are we wasting tax dollars appealing this?
That, that's your opinion, that it's a waste to taxpayers.
It's not an opinion. Why can't you tell me? Even if it's not a waste, why can't you respond?
I just did. It's your opinion. It's, it's not our opinion. Okay?
No, no, the opinion is not about wasting it. The opinion is, why aren't we appealing this?
I'm not going to, I'm not going to talk litigation strategy, Mr. Queeros, so please continue.
But I'm entitled to it. You know, I pay taxes.
You're not. You think you are, but you're not.
How am I not entitled to? What is the, I?
Litigation strategy, that's not to be shared with the public.
Litigation strategy, they're not supposed, we don't have a right to appeal or not appeal?
Why? The village feels it should appeal something, and to tell you that, obviously it means that we don't think we're wrong, so please continue.
Well, the responses aren't to my satisfaction.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Okay, all right. You'll pay, this will be, this is on the middle class and it's for more.
I know, I'm totally paying for it, okay. Okay, if Mr. Queeros is done, please get Glenn.
Good evening, board members. Glenn Tippett, 506 Hill Street. We're months past the flood, and I still don't see anything on the agenda to deal with the 50-foot setback or any adjustments to the height that buildings can be built in the flood area. You have many, many homeowners who have to make a decision of how they are going to repair their homes and businesses. Yet, right now, if you are within that 50-foot setback, you are very limited with what you can do. And whether you want to make a decision whether to raise your house or not would have a lot to do with what the height restrictions in that area of the flood plain is. I think that the village should put this matter on immediately to try to ease some of the restrictions that homeowners in the flood zone have as of right now, the way zoning is. Thank you.
Thank you, Glenn. Ms. Silver, Ellen Silver?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, Ellen.
Hey, Tom. So I'm here tonight to, to talk about the proposed tree law. Is this the time to do that?
Actually, Ellen, we're going to have, that's going to be on a public hearing right after this, so I could, I could put you up to bat first on that. How's that?
What time should I come back in?
Just hang out. It's going to be another, you know, just stay on the attendees and we'll get you in two minutes.
Okay, thank you, Tom.
H.L. Devois.
Hey, Jill? Yes, hi. Am I unmuted? Can you hear me?
Yes, sorry.
Yes, hi. I just wanted to make a few, just brief comments on the Prospect Avenue parking. I've lived here for about four and a half years. Our next door neighbor, Tony, I forget, cannot remember his last name, but when we moved here, he immediately told us, as did other neighbors, that the speeding cars along Prospect Avenue has been an issue that the neighbors have tried to get addressed for 35 to 40 years. Every single day, we have incidents pulling out of our driveway. We have cars parked up to the edges of our driveway, and we have no line of sight at all out to the road. So we have to nose our car out, and every day, there's an incident, whether it's coming, you know, from the village or from the Fenimore side. There have been verbal altercations amongst some people and neighbors due to near accidents. I think the idea that we wait until there's a serious accident to do, the idea that was proposed, I believe, by one of the traffic people on our walk around the neighborhood, or the idea that was latched on to by one of the traffic people, of moving the parking to the other side of the street, where there are no driveways, other than two, would dramatically increase the safety on the street for both the residents and for the first responders who do go quite fast down the street at times. You know, there will be a bad accident at some point, and it's unclear to me why we would wait for that to take place. I think some residents have brought up the question of the the curve, the curve down towards the Hofstadter residence, and I've measured the street, and we could easily not have parking towards the Hofstadter residence and all along the other side of the street, and still have the same number of parking spaces. I don't think that we need to add or gain parking by, you know, moving the parking to the other side of the street where there are no driveways. We just, what we do need to do is address the safety issue. And, you know, whether it's, yeah, 10, 20 years, I just, the idea that there's going to be a serious incident, there's going to be a loss of, an injury or a loss of life, God forbid. You know, I, I don't understand why anybody would object other than on an aesthetic basis, and the idea that someone would be harmed or injured, or God forbid, killed for someone else's perception of an improvement or a degrading of an aesthetic issue, I, I, you know, I take issue with that. So I think that there's been some reports, a study of this, it makes sense. You know, and in the end, will be what it is. I think there's many more important issues that the village professionals and politicians are working on. But I, it just does seem like it would make sense, and it would be a safety improvement. And I hate to think that we would have to wait till there would be a horrible incident to, you know, to see the wisdom of what would have been a good move. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. I just want to, not at all to take sides in this issue, because I really don't, I don't know what the correct answer is yet, and I'm waiting for more information. But just in general, throughout the community, I realize that, you know, people feel very, you know, like an ownership in the street and front of them, and in a lot of ways, that's good. But parking and, you know, the parking regulations are not just for the people who live on that block, they're for the whole community. I lived at 151 Fenimore for years, and I can tell you that it is oftentimes very difficult to find a parking spot in that neighborhood. So I, I, I.
Yeah, understood. I don't, I don't think.
And I'm not going to be argumentative with anybody, but I just, I want people to know that, you know, the, the streets and the right of way belong to us all in the community. And I do understand that there, you know, people have a definite personal concern about this, but I just, you know, because people tend to get very, I know people put stones in the street to demarcate their parking spot when, you know, they don't own that parking spot, but I just, you know, this is said more for the greater community than for the issue that is on project.
Yeah, to be, just to be clear, of course, that was not myself that had the stones in the street. The, and I, you know. Understood, understood. And just, just to, I, you know, we, we, it's frankly, it's quite nice to have the parking on the street. In some ways, you, you get to meet people, you say hi, you know, you see people coming and going. You know, I'm an urban studies major from college, I understand that, you know, having the parking on the street means more eyes, more safety. It means more community. We're not really arguing the question, or not, not arguing anything really, the parking. The question is really the safety of all of us who have driveways that are blind, yeah. And I know you know that, so, but thank you very much for your time. Appreciate your service ability.
Dan Zaurer? I might be pronouncing that wrong. Please feel free to correct me.
Hi, how are you? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, sorry if I lose service, it's because I'm currently on a plane about to take off, but this is the only time that I knew that this was available. My name is Dan Zauder. I'm a former Mamara Nick resident, lived there from age two and a half to 18 years old. I'm a proud alumni of Mariam.
Dan, we can't hear you. Hey, Dan, you might be in the part of the flight where they are advising you to turn your phone off. But we'll move on from Mr. Zaurer, and I'm sorry that he had technical difficulties there. Let's put a Marilyn Borst. Marilyn? Well, you got that, buddy.
She's using an older version, so I have to promote it to her panelists.
Okay, we have to promote you. Give us a second. Marilyn? Hello? Okay, Marilyn is not at her apparatus. Maybe she put her hand up for the tree law. Let's go to Mr. Hofstadter.
John, unmute yourself.
Hello. So yes, my name is John Hofstadter. I'm at 304 Prospect Avenue, and I just wanted to address a couple of things in regard to the discussion. You know, we asked that the village keep us in the loop because we were blindsided by what the village did in regard to the whole idea of moving parking, because it apparently came out of a couple of people's requests who live on the block. There are numerous, I think 11 or 12 other people who live on the block that are not in favor of this and have never had an issue, and also numerous other people who use Prospect Avenue as pedestrians. And this would in fact, the proposal would in fact make it less safe for them because it's a blind curve at the intersection of Prospect and Maple. And there would be parking on both sides of Prospect Avenue at the intersection of Maple, according to what's been proposed. And as a result, with the cars that do speed and the cars that do speed that are emergency service workers, they would basically potentially have head-on collisions. So at a time when the village has never had an issue with accidents here, I don't know why the village would propose moving it, moving parking to the other side. There have been no, no documentation of any citations by the police as a result of people coming out of their driveways and causing accidents, and no documentation of any other moving violations on the block between Prospect Avenue and Fenimore Road. So, you know, this actually makes it less safe, less safe for drivers, less safe for pedestrians. And, you know, the idea that this is all about safety is ironic, given that the village has not painted the crosswalks at Prospect Avenue and Maple since the road has been paved. So if the village is serious about safety, let's get on that first and foremost. And second of all, you know, the, the pedestrians on the block would be in a much dire situation trying to cross in front of Prospect Avenue and Maple with cars parked on either side of Prospect Avenue on the south side, because it would, will create a blind spot for them to be crossing from. So I also find it interesting that the village, you know, that we have sent out emails, and this was a big hullabaloo several months ago, and the village, you know, said, "Oh, yeah, we'll communicate with you, we'll communicate with you," and then the village gets a report today, ironically, to put on the work session, and doesn't share that with any of the neighbors that were included in the email that all of you were copied on. So I, I agree that, you know, emergency service workers, the police and EMS have to sometimes travel quickly on Prospect Avenue. I fear that this will just make it less safe for them and less safe for pedestrians, and so I encourage you not to accept this.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Everybody else's, Ellen's for the law.
Could I ask some clarity here? Because I see our agenda says, our work session agenda says on this issue that the final report is, we're awaiting final report.
Yeah. So can you take? So I pushed the report, or sorry, when I published the agenda, we had not yet received the report from AKRF that came in very late on Friday, and I emailed it to the board. I neglected to update the, the work session until today, however. Yes, and the, and the report basically shows moving parking from the north side of Prospect Avenue to the south side of Prospect Avenue, you know, and says essentially that we would increase by six the number of parking spots. I, I venture a guess that that number is optimistic in the sense of between the driveways and the area by Prospect Avenue that's going to be redesigned. I would imagine that the traffic consultant would in the end probably not want parking between the first driveway and Prospect Avenue on the going east. So you would end up actually losing parking, and you would end up making it less safe. So I'm not sure what the winning proposal is here, but it's certainly not that one.
Okay, thank you. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing, continuation of public hearing, CLF-2021, the village tree law. We started this at the last Board of Trustees' meeting, and here we are today. I need a motion to open this public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Or you please call. Trustees, Winter?
Yes.
That is?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
The fourth?
Yes.
May I, Murphy?
Hi.
Tom, before you begin taking comments, the question was to release a memo that you all wanted to talk about, despite the fact that the attorney had removed peremptive and confidential from it. And I think that needs to be released. You said you wanted to talk about it, and?
This was the appropriate time to make the decision. I did not want to make the decision via email, because it was a board decision. The village attorney sent out a memo detailing responses to comments folks had, and a letter that was mailed to us by Long Term Litigant Hampshire Country Club about their reservations on the tree law. That letter was originally marked confidential advice of attorney, as our attorney does to us, and it's because it's up to the board to decide if, that we want to waive the confidentiality. And I make a motion that we waive the confidentiality of that memo, and let it be part of the public record.
A second.
Or we call roll.
Trustees, Winter?
Yes.
That is?
Yes.
Lucas?
I don't think we need to waive it, because Bob and Mark already said on, on, I guess on Saturday, that it wasn't confidential. So I guess my question is, when?
No.
They said, they, they said that they, they removed confidentiality and said it was up to us to make the decision. That's what they.
First, it was up to us, but then Bob looked at it and basically said there was nothing confidential about it. So I guess my question is, you know, going forward, if we're going to get a memo on a Friday, and it's going to get marked confidential, but it's really something that isn't confidential, how do we, you know, it's, it's, you know, I mean, if the lawyer doesn't think it's confidential, who are we to say it's confidential? So I guess it's just a policy decision. I mean, I don't think it's confidential. I'm happy to waive any confidentiality that we have, but I think based on what he said, it's, you know, it's not confidential. And I think if you figure out a way of streamlining it, because it would have been beneficial for this to be published as backup when we got it Friday or Saturday, so that people could look at it. So I'm just thinking, going forward, how do we, you know, they worked hard to get this to us on short notice, and it just happened to be late in the day. And, you know, maybe if they don't think it's really confidential, they don't have to market that way. I'm just, that's, it's just something that we need to figure out, maybe not for today, but something that we all need to work on.
How do you vote on the motion?
I'm going to vote yes.
Trustees, the fourth?
Yes.
May I, Murphy?
Hi. Okay, that's done.
Could we add? Could we ask Bob to explain at least the Hampshire portion?
Sure.
Memo, because I don't know if Sally can post it right now. I don't know. Oh, she can do anything. Sally can do anything.
Bob?
Bob, can you explain the question?
Do you want to explain the Hampshire portion? Okay. So so Hampshire's comment was that the proposed tree law would impose a per se mandate upon all private property owners to replace a single tree on their lots with up to three new trees at their own expense. And the initial response to the law does not impose that mandate. It designates specific trees that can be, that have to be replaced, and doesn't require three trees for one. And the second point they made was that this proposed law would be a taking, well, a deprivation of property without just compensation in violation of the Fifth Amendment to the United States Constitution, and presumably the corresponding amendment to the state constitution. In response to that, we identified a decision in the let's see. It was a decision that called People Against NOV out of the appellate term a few years ago that said a similar provision was not an unconstitutional taking, and the state statute actually authorizes tree laws like this. So those are the two responses to the Hampshire comments.
Okay, thank you. Ellen, I promise you, you'd be first up and back. Will you step out? Someone's here. Ellen, unmute yourself.
Thank you. I just unmuted.
Go ahead.
So I'm on the phone here tonight just to express the support by the Committee for the Environment of the proposed tree law. Our committee wants to thank Beverly Sheridan and the other members of the Tree Committee for the tireless efforts in protecting the trees in our village. We believe this law is carefully drafted, taking into consideration laws enacted in other neighboring communities. I just, by way of background, so whoever's on here has sort of the background of the Tree Committee is composed of resident volunteers that provide a valuable service to our community. The committee has planted eighty to two hundred trees per year for the past ten years. They provide oversight as to the condition of trees on village-owned property and report on where pruning or care is needed. The Tree Committee also runs a tree pruning program for resident volunteers and office educational programming. So there could be no debate, no debate, excuse me, that our tree canopy percentage is low. The village canopy is twenty-three percent compared to thirty-two percent for Larchmont, fifty percent for Scarsdale, and fifty-three percent for the county average. Yes, there are structural and zoning reasons why our canopy may be lower, but we should aim to do better and at a minimum protect the canopy that we have today. And for anyone wondering why this is an important piece of legislation, I strongly urge you to walk by 1010 Oriental Avenue. This one acre property had beautiful majestic trees that were just ruthlessly clear-cut by a spec developer. But we cannot let this happen again. We all know that the real estate market is hot right now. Developers are looking to buy lands in our community where they will clear-cut the property and be able to build large homes. We need to protect the character of our community, which means protecting our trees. The environmental and health benefits of trees are many, and I just want to highlight a few of those. Trees are on the front lines in our battle to combat climate change. They improve the air we breathe by absorbing carbon dioxide while releasing oxygen into the air. Trees reduce the amount of stormwater runoff, which reduces erosion and pollution to our waterways and can help mitigate the effects of flooding. Trees provide shade. Trees near homes reduce the need to crank the air conditioning. Trees along our sidewalks make walking more accessible. Trees are home to birds and other wildlife. They provide shelter, food, and protection. Many of the trees were here long before we were, and it is our responsibility to protect them. Our neighboring communities already have laws that are comparable to or even more stringent than the current proposal. It is high time that the village give no lesser protection to its trees than our neighbors in the town of Mamaronek, the village of Larchmont, and other nearby communities have done. Those are my remarks, and I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much, Ellen. Thank you for all you do on the Committee for the Environment, too.
Thanks.
The next up is Beverly Sheridan, who has labored long and hard on this law for an interminable time.
Hello.
Beverly.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. And thank you for considering this law at your hearing tonight and last time. The benefits, you'll see that the Committee for the Environment and the Committee, the Tree Committee, are walking hand in hand on this. The benefits of trees are widely recognized. They mitigate flooding, remove carbon from the air, and store it in their wood and through their roots in the earth, often for hundreds of years. They release oxygen as part of this process into our atmosphere. They absorb noise, soften landscapes, and lower the temperature around us. These are the reasons that neighborhoods with many trees frequently have higher real estate values. These benefits come primarily from mature, large trees. The benchmark for canopy cover set by, referred to by scientists, is about forty percent. Most recent United States Geological Survey satellite data shows that the county of Westchester has a fifty-three percent canopy cover. Town of Mamaronek has forty-four percent. Village of Larchmont drops to thirty-two percent, and the village of Mamaronek is, I mean, at the end with a twenty-five percent canopy cover. We need to increase our canopy here in the village. There are two ways to go about this. One of them is to plant new trees, wait for them to grow thirty or forty years to get us our full benefits. And this is definitely something that the village has been doing with its robust planting program for quite a few years now. The other way, however, is to protect the existing mature trees. In the village of Mamaronek, as well as in the United States generally, most land is actually held in private hands, and therefore, most of the mature, large trees are located on private property. The current village law protects only the public trees. There's nothing in it to cover risks to private trees, whereas most of our neighboring municipalities already have these laws, many of which were passed within the last ten years. So we're behind. One way to think of trees is as a form of infrastructure. They could be, they should be part of our plans for flood mitigation, for air quality improvement, for temperature reduction. And they have some real advantages over built infrastructure, which depreciates as soon as you have finished working on it. Trees, in fact, appreciate every year. They get bigger, they, their branches spread, their canopy is greater, their trees spread, and they are much more efficient at performing the work we need from them. In addition to that, they're a diffuse form of infrastructure. You can plant them anywhere on property. They don't have to be clustered around main lines or a central station. They're also reliable. If one tree goes down, the rest of them keep on working. And finally, they're beautiful, which is not something you can say about the Con Edison wires overhead or the telephone poles and lines that we see all around us. There is one feature in this law that we haven't really talked about very much, and that is one that allows us to plant beyond the right of way. It's, I think, when I look at other neighboring laws, it's unique to what we're suggesting. The right of way, as all of you know, is a strip of land that runs along private property next to the street. And in that strip, the village may put sidewalks if it thinks them necessary. It can do lay pipes if they're necessary, do other work. Frequently, it includes a strip of land between, a smaller strip of land between the sidewalk and the street, and that is what we at the Tree Committee refer to fondly as the planting strip. That's where we generally put street trees when we're putting them in front of a residence. If we pass this law, it would allow us to go to the owners of property in Mamaronek where the properties are small. These are older, generally older neighborhoods. They have smaller lots, and they have narrow streets. And frequently, there's either no planting strip, or it's so small that there's no possibility of putting a tree there. But if we're allowed to do this, we could ask them whether they would be willing to have a village tree planted on their property. That would be a way to bring the benefits to parts of this village that aren't currently getting tree benefits. These happen to be a lot of the same neighborhoods that have the most trouble with flooding. So I'm asking you tonight to consider the law before you, for the needs of our community, and to consider it for the future that's facing our children and grandchildren, future that calls for us to take action today. And I'm asking you to vote for this law for the benefit of the entire village. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you for your hard work on this. The next up is Susan Berenswig.
She's good. Is that good?
Hi, Susan. You gotta mute yourself.
Okay, good. Can you hear me now?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, great. Thanks. All right. So I'm Susan Berenswig, and I'm here to advocate also for the passage of the tree ordinance. Managing the urban forest requires sensitivity and responsiveness to diverse business political. Expertly need to provide authority for our municipal government to take responsibility for trees on private lands. It's shocking to me that while we had a tree law for trees on public property since probably the mid-eighties, from what I could see in the, when I did a little search, but we have none for private property, which is most of the trees in the village. The reasoning that prevailed over thirty years ago should be the same now. Tree protection benefits the whole community, and there's no single user value for a tree. I was going to go through all of the benefits that come to us for trees, but I think you know them all, and obviously, the reduction of flood damage is very relevant to Mamaronek right now. And I didn't understand until earlier this week that trees slow rainwater and keep rainwater from going directly on the street into the sewers. They hold, you know, because it falls on the leaves, and eventually, the water will go down the street, but it doesn't, it really helps it back. It helps by holding back the water from the sewers when the rain is falling. What I also like about the law is that it permits homeowners, doesn't say you can't cut or trim your tree. It just says that if, that you have to get someone to decide whether this is a reasonable thing or not. It provides oversight. And it also requires planting to mitigate the loss of the tree. Same thing for any building that's going to go on, in, on the site. It doesn't say you can't cut them down. It just says that you can't cut them down at, you know, wantonly or recklessly. And then it also, I like the fact that it includes the tree impact in the site plan that would be reviewed. So it's not just the building that gets you know, if you think about it, the village regulates practically everything else in our lives. How high houses can be, what they look like, what we do with our garbage, what the noise happens, you know, just every other thing. And it's shocking to me that right now we can't protect this vital natural resource on private property. So it's time to be able to do that. Thank you very much for your consideration. I'm done.
Thank you, Susan. And Susan, I just want to point out that you following the letter of the law. You wrote to the Board of Trustees this morning and let us know that you will be speaking tonight because you're a member of the Ethics Board, and I appreciate your fidelity to the code.
Which I didn't know about until this morning, but thank you, Mr. Spalzino, for pointing that out to me. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. The next up is George. Unmute yourself, George.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, and Board members. My name is George Megradici, and I am the president of the Oriental Point Association. And on behalf of my board and the members of the community, we wholeheartedly support this new tree law. It has been ten years in an attempt to have a perfect tree law, and as we all know, there's nothing perfect. But having a law on the books and being able to modify it in the future is certainly something better than nothing. As we all know, we've experienced, you know, a very big effect into the, in the community where a developer has come in, clear-cutted his entire property, and only because he could. He left a ride to come into Mamaronek to do that. And it's been a real eyesore. He's turned his property into a parking lot. This law needs to take effect, and we need to control, you know, what, what happens on private property with respect to development and planning. And of course, having it go through our building department and all the other boards and commissions are certainly very important. And I'm not you know, repeat everything everyone else has said. I'm fully in support of everything they've said, and I certainly don't want to be repetitive in that. But we would certainly like to see this law passed as soon as possible. Again, it has been ten years in an attempt to do this. I do want to congratulate all those who have been working on this, you know, including some of the trustees, as well as, of course, you know, members of the community. Wendy Zoland, who's done a terrific job at pushing this forward as well, and all the others from the Committee of the Environment and the Tree Committee. So, Mayor, we would certainly, again, fully support this. Obviously, it's not a perfect law, but you folks will, you know, be able to tweak it as you go on and see that things need to be changed or modified. And thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Megradici. The next up is Allison Stabile.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm not going to be repetitive, but I fully support all the previous comments that were made. And I want to wholeheartedly thank the Committee for the Environment and the Tree Committee, and Beverly Sheridan in particular, because I know how hard she's been working on this for so many years. And I just want to add my voice and full support for passing this law. It's high time. And I guess I was dismayed, you know, over many years to understand that the village of Mamaronek calls itself Tree City USA, but we don't have a tree law. So I think it's, it's long overdue, and I hope that you will support it.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
The next up is Tess Ramos-Dries, the Director of Policy and Analysis. Please excuse me if I am.
Hi, I also wanted to just give my support to the tree law. I've been a resident of Mamaronek. I went to the comics. I went to the high school. I work there now, and I really resonate with everything that's been said so far, and I support the work that has been done.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Okay. We've heard from the public on two occasions on this law. I think it's pretty obvious from what I've written, I support this law. You know, about six and a half years ago, I bought an apartment on Richbell Road, and outside of it was a big old tree. And one night, about a third of the tree fell. A resounding crash for no apparent reason. There was no rain. There was no wind. It was just time to go. And then a few months later, the village took down the rest of the tree. And I really missed it. You know, it was, you know, one of the things I found enchanting about the apartment was there was this lovely huge tree outside with squirrels and birds. enchanting about the apartment was there was this lovely huge tree outside with squirrels and birds and, you know, for I know it sounds weird, but from a kid from the city, that that's a lot of nature for me. And you know, I really did appreciate it. I appreciate that the village has since planted trees on on Richbell Road. Uh, and but when, you know, when that tree left and when it went to meet its maker, when I went over to Rainbow Bridge into Tree Heaven, you could really feel the difference, you know, in the sun coming through my window and, you know, the the cooling effect that that tree provided was immense. So, you know, I I understand on a personal level what
and though it may seem like a small
I don't know who's watching TV right now, but uh but let's mute ourselves. So, you know, I'm in favor of us passing this law tonight. And I'd like to hear from the rest of the board.
I can I just say two minor things? Tom?
Whatever you want to say.
So one is that you know, there's a lot of backup information on the that the tree committee has prepared. That's very interesting. If you want to educate yourself more about trees. And two, there was a little bit of confusion about the notice. And so when we voted to adopt the hearing, when we voted to schedule the hearing on September thirteenth, we scheduled it for two weeks ago, September twenty seventh, and that's the notice that went in the newspaper. But for some reason, last two weeks ago on the agenda, it's on October twenty fifth, but that wasn't correct. And also, we did find that it was a tie to Action Underseeker. And there was a couple of comments that we hadn't we hadn't done those two things. We hadn't properly noticed it and we hadn't done seeker, but we have done both of those things. So the lawyers assured us today that we were in order. I want Bob to correct that, but I think we've 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 done what we need to do technically to hold this hearing and adopt the law.
Thank you.
And I then I just want to thank the tree committee because this is version twenty one of the most recent iteration that started with Bob three years ago. So it's probably more like version thirty one. So thanks to Bob and Mark and Christie and Krista before that. There have been a lot of lawyers who worked on this with many members of the tree committee and everybody. And also Jerry, who did a tremendous amount of work, and I think he'll be very happy to get back from vacation if we pass this tree law. So thanks to everybody.
Thank you for pointing out Jerry Jerry Barbario, our village manager, who's on a much deserved vacation this week. Mentioned at the beginning. Any other board members wish to comment?
I'll just point out the obvious, which is that the tree committee has done an extraordinary amount of work on this. I mean, the hours they spent working on this is really admirable and it's just been a labor of love for them. I know, you know, I I support this tree law. I'm going to vote yes tonight if we vote tonight. I I I like there to be more carrot. So I would, I I hope that we will continue to work on encouraging trees to be planted in the village and encouraging people to do more to protect their trees and plant more trees. So I I hope this is the the start of more tree effort in the village, not the end of it. But I really do want to thank the tree committee. I think they've been just absolutely extraordinary.
Anybody else?
I'll just echo the thanks. I don't want to extend and I'm happy to second the motion to adopt.
I don't think we made a motion.
I thought you had.
No, well, let's let's start it all over. I'll make a motion that we adopt the tree law marked.
You have to close the hearing first.
I make a motion that we close the meeting.
Second, the hearing, the hearing. Yeah.
Yeah. Here, exactly. Or you call trustees.
Yes.
Hatches?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
Before?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy? Hi. And now we'll make a motion that the Village of Mamaroneck adopts PLF twenty twenty one, the Village New Tree Law. Trustee to four seconds. Augustino? Trustees.
Yes.
Hatches?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
Before?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy? Yes, and I just want to point out, you know, that originally I had reservations about the law in in one of its earlier edition. And the tree committee worked hard to address those reservations. And I really, really appreciate the cooperative nature and I think it's a better law because of it. But I really, really appreciate the hard work that they put in and the persistence and the stick to itiveness. Thank you all very much. And I hope that it serves the village well in the future. There you go. That's how laws are made. The next item on the agenda is the order of bills. The first is item two A, which is overtime for parks department employees. And what is going on here is that the parks department is taking money out of their accounts. The building improvement account is switching it to overtime and the contract services account and switching it to overtime because they're doing tasks in house that were usually done by outside vendors. And I can tell you this, this summer and throughout COVID, and if you look at the you look at the scarecrows on Mamaroneck Avenue, and that's all the result of parks department programs. We've never had a more proactive parks department does more for the community and looks out for our kids and the folks down there. Every one of them worked so hard for the children and the recreation of this community. And I'm just as Hubert Humphrey would say, please just punch the whole bunch. So I would be happy to make that motion.
A second.
Mr. First off. Trustees.
Yes.
Hatches?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy? Hi. The next up is item two B. And this is transferring six thousand dollars from a contingent account and putting into the Marina Docks and Utilities for Water. I guess they were busy down the harbor this year and they use more water than they had anticipated. You know, years ago, the docks in Mamaroneck did not have water and but we added water a few years back. And of course, that comes with a price. So they have to move six thousand dollars from contingency to Marina Docks Utilities Water. Somebody have any questions or concerns?
Was this from a water leak? Dan?
Daniel muted. Dan saw you muted.
I apologize, but according to the resolution, it was there was a water leak which was detected and fixed. It's caused excess water usage.
We know how long it took to detect that, just as a bit of curiosity.
I I have, I could review the the bills for this meter and, you know, see where the spike occurred. But I I could get that information here tomorrow.
Okay, would be helpful.
Okay. Please make a motion.
So moved.
Give us a second. We weren't jumping here with a second. We'll sit around.
Oh, second, sorry.
That's it. It's not only your job, but thank you. Or you call roll. Trustees.
Yes.
Hatches?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
Before?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy? Hi. The next item to see, yes, to see that the board decided not to move forward with that. I have already had Ogie do mathematics on the ordered voucher. We'll get to later. Item two D. Manual vouchers. Anybody have any questions or concerns? Hearing none. I need a motion to approve manual vouchers.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, ladies. Or do please call roll. Trustees.
Yes.
Hatches?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
Before?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy? Hi. Abstract ordered vouchers. Any questions or concerns?
I have a question on page eight. On, I guess it's one, two, three, four, fifth line up from the bottom, colored sessions. On the consultation, I'm sorry, review of Charles Lane Stormwater Colonial Court. I'm not sure why is this not a escrow type reimbursement? Dan?
I have to take a look at the invoice. If there is a an error, we can do a journal entry tomorrow to correct for that.
Okay, because I I thought we were for for stormwater reviews, we were having escrow payments made, correct?
That's correct. But again, I don't know.
So I have a check if it needs to be corrected, please have it corrected.
But the, it says consultation, rate, foil response and review. So if they had to be consulted about a foil, that doesn't go on the homeowners bill.
I believe that after review, there's a semicolon.
Okay, but
so I think that the question is whether it is reimbursable or not. That's what that's the question.
I I understand, but I I'm hoping that we are not charging our residents for people who are foiling about their property.
I'm not questioning the
What you're saying, Dan, I'm making a statement about in general, this is prices of port foil of one of your buddies. All right. Can you check on that for trustee? And any other questions or concerns?
I think Glenn has his hand up.
I'm going to get to Glenn. I'm asking the board any other questions. Victor?
Yes, on page three. Seven thousand five hundred. Harrison Edwards, it says deposit. Does that mean that the money was provided to to them?
No, I just, I just talked
Ogie, yes, please.
Ogie about that off camera. There's gonna, I'm gonna ask for an amendment. We're taking that off the abstract. That has to come off the abstract.
And my question was, was the deposit given to that?
None of those checks have been given to anybody. That's what the abstract is about.
Because it says deposit, I had the questions. Thank you. I can clarify, Ogie.
My pleasure. Any other questions or concerns before we go to public? Hey Glenn. Boy, could you get Mr. Tippett?
Yes, sir. Marine patient sector office equipment. You have House of Fins monthly service contracts, September twenty twenty one Echo Veco M two return pump for five hundred and thirty seven point nine nine. Then if you go further down under marine education contract services, you have House of Fins monthly service contracts, September twenty first and Echo Zap Veca M two return pump for a thousand dollars. You have you have two two items on two lines that seem that are under the same service line was there's some kind of an emergency or is there two separate service contracts?
I I can answer that question, Mr. Mayor. When a voucher is entered into KBS, which is our financial system, the and the person entering the voucher will enter each invoice on that voucher and will assign the proper general ledger account number to the purchase. What happens in the system when it prints the abstract is it will show the same general description for both items on the voucher, but it will account each purchase to the proper general ledger account number. Did I answer that correctly, Mr. Clark Treasure?
Yeah.
Thank you.
What 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 was exactly spent on the five thirty seven ninety nine if it wasn't the monthly service contract?
The the monthly service contract is the one thousand dollars, the other item.
Correct. Yeah, yeah, right. And that and so I'm wondering what was the five thirty seven ninety nine for?
I think the description is in the in the voucher line.
I'm reading it. It's it says the exact same thing as for the
Which page number?
They both say House of Fins LLC monthly service contract, September twenty twenty one, and Echo Vectra M two return pump.
So so it's the return pump, which is the five thirty seven.
Their return pump, but they both say the exact same thing.
As as I as I noted, Glenn, when we charge items to two separate general ledger account numbers, it uses the same description that the end user enters into KBS, but it will show it on multiple general ledger accounts. You'll you'll also see that with things like our copiers, which are cost accounted on a monthly basis. You'll see it sometimes with cable phone bills from Optimum. You'll see it charged to multiple account numbers. Some public works purchases. Okay. Race the vehicle maintenance.
Thank you, Glenn.
Okay, one other thing. Under engineering, I saw that Keller charged us for the the sidewalks that we had asked about. Are those reports going to be coming soon? This is, I think we got Orietta Old White Plains Road. Are those reports in or are they going to be presented soon?
I imagine that they'll be presented soon. I don't have the exact date, but I I know that Jerry was working with that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Glenn. Have a good evening. Okay, so there being no more questions from the board from the audience. Okay, I'm going to make a motion to amend the ordered vouchers to remove on page three. Harrison Edwards PR Marketing Services deposit of seventy five hundred dollars. I don't agree with the decision, but it is the decision and that brings our grand total to one million seventy thousand two hundred and seventy nine dollars and thirty four cents. Because I had Ogie do the figure in before. So with that being our new grand total, I will make an emotion, make an emotion. I will make a motion to accept the ordered vouchers. May I please have a second?
I will second.
Lucas beat you to punch that. Thank you very much. Please call roll. Trustees.
Yes.
Hatches?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
Before?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy? Hi. Thank you. Let me sign these for you. Old business, there is no old business. New business, resolution establishing a tree preservation fund trust account. Luckily, we can move forward on this because we have passed the tree law. Book here. Daniel, you want to give us a little synopsis of this, my friend?
Sure. We're just adopting a tree law. One of the requirements is that any fines collected pursuant to that law go into a tree preservation fund. So this is a resolution to create the tree preservation fund that's required based on the law that you just adopted.
Well put, succinct, cogent, bang, got it. The concerns. Okay, does it does a resident with the hand up? You grab that? Timer. Hello? Hello?
Good eve- good evening, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes.
It's Dorian Roney. I know you're establishing a tree preservation fund, but are there guidelines as to how the money will be spent and not going towards an over budget line in some other category?
Well, it has a fun work. It's trust account basically that once the funds go in, whenever they utilize utilization of those funds must be approved by a board of trustees.
Correct, but is is there any establishment of guidelines as to how the funds will be used for what purpose?
Yeah, I mean, as the resolution and the law reads, says Yeah, I mean, as the resolution and the law reads, says they give you solely for the purpose of preserving trees, minimizing damage to and removal of trees and increasing the tree canopy in the village of Mamaroneck. I believe I copy and paste that directly from the law.
You did.
So so we can remove trees, we can do a couple of other things with this money. But it's it's going to be earmarked for tree preservation and it's not going to be used if it's not utilized to cover an over budget.
No.
Other department.
No.
Okay, sounds good. And I'd like to correct what was said about the tree law, that information was posted on the website about seeker and it is not. So that was the email that I sent, so I guess the public can participate.
That's not what I said. What I said was when we adopted, when we scheduled the public hearing, so at our September thirteenth, when we scheduled the public hearing, the resolution, that's when we did seeker and that's when it was scheduled for September twenty seventh. For some reason, our packet said September twenty seventh two weeks ago, but the but the resolution said October twenty fifth, but the notice.
Correct, but the Board of Trustees meeting that was held in September, seeker was not discussed and E A F C A Fs and all of that is not posted on the website for the public.
It's a type two action. It was classified as a type two action and that doesn't require an E A F.
I don't know how, because there's zoning changes to the law, but I know you guys voted on it. Good luck with enforcing it.
There's no zoning changes in the law, Dorian, and it and it and so it's it's a type two.
Sections five through seven are zoning changes and then the latter are changes to the subdivision law within the law. A type two action is for maintenance of trees if you're dealing with it with a park, because that's what's in the seeker workbook and handbook.
Well, this is the advice that we got from the layers, so.
Just let me, Mrs. Spalzino?
Yes, yes, Mayor. All those all of those changes outside the context of this chapter were simply tied to this chapter. So in our view, they're covered by the type two action.
Thank you, and you you have vast experience in secret, right?
I'm sorry?
You have a vast experience in secret?
I used to teach it, yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Very good. Have a good evening.
I'll make a motion to approve this resolution establishing a tree preservation fund trust account. Mr. Fusco.
Trustees, Winthrop?
Yes.
Najas?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
The board?
The floor?
Yes.
Yes.
Hi. The next item is authorizing dates and street closures for the twenty twenty one Turkey Trot. So Turkey Trot is going to happen this year. It will be November twenty first from nine fifteen AM to eleven thirty AM. Beach that will be closed, West Post Road from Harbor Island Park to Orient Avenue, Orient Avenue from Boston Post Road to Bleecker Avenue, Bleecker Avenue from Orient Avenue to Rushmore Avenue, Rushmore Avenue to Bleecker Avenue to Orient Avenue, and then they go back down back down Post Road into the park. Used to be five miles, now it's five K. Everybody want to make a motion?
Almost.
Back in.
Oh, you please.
Trustees, Winthrop?
Yes.
Najas?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
The board?
Yes.
Ma'am Murphy?
Hi. Little song you have the. Next item on a thing is resolution scheduling a public hearing on the cannabis retail dispensaries and onsite consumption licenses in the village of Mamaroneck. Somebody have any questions or concerns?
I just had one and I just I I wanted to I just I just just like in a belt and suspenders approach in under under B. Section one B. We which says the Board of Trustees of the Village of Mamaroneck County of Westchester requests that the Cannabis Control Board of the State of New York prohibit the establishment of cannabis retail dispensary licenses and onsite consumption licenses under Article four of the cannabis law within the village of Mamaroneck. Most of the other communities that have done it had had that as had 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 sort of they had A and B and that would have been the that would have been B and A would have been the Board of Trustees of the Village of Mamaroneck County of Westchester hereby opts out of having retail cannabis dispensaries and onsite cannabis consumption establishments licensed to establish within the boundaries of the Village of Larchmont, Westchester County, New York. So they use two paragraphs, and I'm just wondering if in a belt and suspenders approach, we can add A and then leave B as is. I think it would change to be one and two or be since section one. I just I I mean, I it's just everybody else uses both of those paragraphs.
Okay, can I just point out something about the Board of Trustees finds and determines that many of these findings are absolutely speculative and there's no supporting evidence of any of this. No, Nora, let me finish, please.
Not the part I'm raising.
This is this is incredible that this is on here. I mean, the part you're raising is fine with me, but public safety and policing issues, where does that come from? I mean, this these are old tropes that have been used to demonize marijuana from the beginning of the last century. You know, there there are there are people that use marijuana that may have, you know, criminal past and the vast majority of people use marijuana have no criminal record. But, you know, the odds of having a criminal record are greater if you're a person of color. We all know this. This is what the law is designed to address. To put this in there, I it's just, I don't know, it it strikes me as, you know, unsupported and, you know, going back to old stereotypes that are really have not been fleshed out. It just it just seems really wrong. I mean, there's no support for any of these statements that the Board of Trustees finds and determines. There's absolutely none. It's all speculation.
I'm not I'm not seeing what you wrote. I've lost that piece. Oh, here it is. Okay, hold on.
The water trust, two A, two B. We could have the two B could have the effect of preventing other desirable establishments from locating within a village in the future due to proximity limitations. Where is that from? I mean, thi- this is just, you know, scare tactics. There's there's no support for any of this. And frankly, the policing and safety issues, it 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 goes back to another time where, you know, marijuana has been demonized as the the drug of people of color. It it's just, I I can't put this is in here. But I'm not going to vote for it anyway, but it just I I for yourselves, I would consider taking that out.
Can you respond to Nora's issue regarding a B A and B one and B two or B A and B B, whatever?
Sure, I mean, obviously, the board can put in the law whatever the board wants to put in the law. I drafted it this way because the language that talks about opting out is not meaningful. What this law, what this statute, what this local law does is track the statutory language that says exactly what the village is authorized to do, which is to ask the cannabis board not to allow these facilities in the village. And then the law says that if you ask, it's it's sort of a strange law. It says the village board can ask, and if the village board asks, the cannabis board can't allow these facilities in the village. What this draft law does is track exactly what the state legislature said you could do. State legislation says nothing about opt out. I'm not even sure what that means. So that's why I did not include it. But if you want to put in, it's up to you.
I mean, I mean, it won't hurt is my it just seems to be consistent with what other people are doing and it won't hurt. That's that. That's my question.
No, I can't tell you it won't hurt, but I can't tell you it won't create a beauty, but if you want to put it in, you can.
What would your advice be, Bob?
I I think you do what the legislature authorizes you to do, and that's why I wrote it this way.
Can I ask a question for Nora? Is this I just opened the the Larchmont law. I think is that that's what you're referring to?
In the Larchmont law, it's in several other laws. It's in.
Okay, may I share the screen one second to see clarify? This is Larchmont. This is on our backup, actually. I'm not using anything from outside. I saw it from our backup from last time. So if anybody wants to look at it, it's in our backup for for our previous meeting in September. And I think what we're talking about is that B, section B is what we have in our proposed law. So I think what you're trying to suggest is that we insert section A, which is the opt out language, and then have B. Essentially, you would like to have this same format similar to what I think NICO and other municipalities I've seen it around. Essentially, if it doesn't hurt, I will I will support this format.
Victor, do me a favor, though. While you have that on the screen, could you go up to legislative intent? Is intended building America, I think, a retail cannabis society license app or stuff? That's their intent. They don't they don't go through findings that are unsupported by fact or science. Just want to point that out.
Nora, what I'm gathering is you would like to use the A and B as B one and B two?
Yeah. I think that's it would be A, so it's three eighteen one. A, one, two, three. And it would be B, one and two. The current the current text that's in there would be two and the paragraph from Larchmont would be one. And I'm good with using the legislative intent from Larchmont as well.
Hey, Bob, can I just ask again, my apologies, I just, if if we haven't put anything in here about a referendum, and I know that the public can, you know, collect petition signatures and create a referendum question or we can create the referendum, but I believe when we discussed this last time, if we create in our legislation a referendum question of this opting out, that it has to be done within a certain number of days. And so it couldn't, we could not in our legislation put it to a referendum in November of twenty twenty two, because we're going to have these other referendum questions on the ballot already, but we cannot do that with this. Am I right?
That's correct. I mean, you're testing my recollection of the technicality of that, but the answer, I believe, is yes.
Okay.
I think what what it has to be the same timeframe as if there were a for a permissive referendum, if the signatures got into place.
Yeah.
Like around sixty days of the thirty day timeframe.
Because this is this is under I think this is under municipal home rule law, section twenty four or something. There was a, but this is under the village law. That's why. There was a reason why you couldn't do it. Yeah, it's within sixty days.
Okay, thank you.
So, Nora, in terms of B, are you moving to or happy to move if you want the B one being the Larchmont language, but A but change to the Village of Mamaroneck?
Yeah. Yeah.
I'm happy to make that motion. Two minute. We have a second?
What was that? Sorry, Dan. What was that? You want to change it as large ones?
What I was, Dora suggested that we take the paragraph A in the Larchmont law and make it be one in our law and make the second or the existing paragraph in B B two. So I was happy to make that motion because I think it makes sense and it's clear, even if it may not have the same legal effect that or change the legal fact.
I guess I guess Nora is making the motion and you're seconding.
Motion, nobody has seconded it yet. Nora, did you want to change the legislative intent?
Oh, I want to get through that one. Let's get through I make, let's get through the motion where we add the paragraph from Larchmont, but we.
You want to second that or not? That's what I.
I'm happy to. I thought I moved it. I'm happy to second it.
Okay, so this is a motion to amend the law before we vote on the law.
That's correct, the current craft.
Ogie?
Trustees, Winthrop?
No.
Najas?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
The board?
Yeah, but I actually had a question before we started voting too quickly. Is this is this can this be done at this stage, Bob? If we make this change, we have to renotice before I vote. Can you clarify that?
You haven't scheduled a public hearing yet.
Right.
Okay. So at this point, we can change the language.
At this one, you can change it yourselves if you feel comfortable that the changes aren't too confusing or you can tell us to change it and in two weeks you can vote on scheduling a public hearing.
Well, I I think I think I'll vote yes, because I think the change is is clear, which is again, this one. This is the language. So essentially, this is what we already have, and this is what everybody has seen in the draft legislation. And this A would be the one inserted, and actually, it's also in our backup. So I think things are perfectly clear. I vote yes.
Just one correction, Victor, we would change Village of Larchmont to Village of Mamaroneck.
Yes, of course. I'm just talking about the format, of course.
Yeah. Because that 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 was my motion.
Ma'am, Ma'am Murphy?
No. Okay, does anybody else want to make any other motions?
I think in terms of legislative findings and intent, that we should simply strike A, no, yeah, A two, A, B, and D. I I'm comfortable leaving one, which does discuss, to Kelly's point, the permissive referendum. C, which just explains that we haven't been able to analyze whether this is what this would involve. E explains that we can opt back, that we can opt in at a later date. And that that's what E and F sort of describe. So I think those those do not make any judgments. They, if we get rid of two A, B, and D, we're not making any value judgments or simply explaining the process. I'm happy for other people to take a look at that and see if they agree, but that's sort of how I read it, to Tom's point.
I follow your I follow your line. I I'll second that to move this forward. I think it's pretty clear, straightforward, no judgments.
Hold on, trustee, he's Winthrop?
No.
Najas?
No.
Lucas?
Yes.
The board?
Yes.
Yes. For this amendment, this amendment, yes. All it was, I wouldn't want this under books for this community. Okay, now with those amendments, we need someone to make a motion to set a public hearing for this law for, I guess, the next.
to set a public hearing for this law for, I guess, uh, the next board trustees meeting, which was, uh, anybody go up in the twenty, twenty fifth? Twenty fifth.
I'll make a motion to schedule a public hearing on this proposed law for September, uh, October the twenty fifth. And, um, we should talk about the seeker issue as well.
Nora's made a motion.
So.
Nora made the motion. That's what we need. There you go. What was, you know?
Trustees, Winthrop?
Yes.
I just?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
Before?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Sort of point out this law, it was a law that was attempted to be passed for decades by the Democratic Controlled Assembly. Finally, when the Democrats got control of the Senate and the governorship, it finally passed. The intent of the state's law was to partially to redress longstanding prejudice and, uh, unequal just enforcement of the law. And, uh, I, I, I think that we are by passing this and by setting public here, we're negating our part in making that right. So I vote no.
And I just want to say that this law, we can opt in at any time, but if we don't opt out by the end of this year, we will have, we don't have any, um, we don't know, the, 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 the review boards haven't been formed yet. The, no regulations have been promulgated, so we don't understand any of the zoning consequences of having retail dispensaries, which are different from medical dispensaries, which are not controlled by a local municipality or, um, establishments where people can go and, and, and use cannabis products. So we don't, because we don't know what the regulations are going to be and because most of the communities around us have opted out, it seems for, to me, to be prudent to opt out now and opt in when we understand what the regulations are, when we really know, we don't, we don't even, I mean, I've asked for this for months. We don't have a map of where these are able to be. It can't be within five hundred feet of a school, but under school definition is only a public school. It's not a private school. It's not a nursery school. Can't be within two hundred feet of a church or some sort of a religious organization. Um, so we don't know where these can and can't be yet. We haven't done that analysis, which the other communities have done. So that's why I think we need to, to, to be more thoughtful about this process. And I would also say to Tom's point about social justice, he's absolutely right. And the most significant aspect of social justice is that convictions have been overturned. So people who are unfairly convicted are getting justice. This is about vendors or people who are going to be able to afford these two hundred and fifty thousand dollar licenses to open these establishments. Or, you know, it's not everybody who's going to be able to afford to open one of these establishments wherever they are permitted.
I just just want to point out, not, not to negate anything you said, but, you know, just having your conviction overturned does not give you your life back. It does not give you the opportunities that you were not afforded, uh, for your whole life because you had a conviction or.
No, but have, but having, but having a retail.
And also fifty percent of the licenses is supposed to be, uh, given to people of color to redress that.
Right. Who could have two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to open an establishment?
Well, I do have two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
I understand that, but I'm just saying it's not, it's, it's not necessarily the people who are harmed by these, you know, regressive laws. That's all. I'm, I'm not suggesting, I'm just saying it's, it's people who lead some kind of a privileged life anyway, who are going to be able to afford to offer the, to open.
I, I, I don't know if you want to go down that road, but go. Kelly has a handle.
You know, I, I just want to make a comment on this, which is, you know, obviously, you know, we're split three, two on whether we should opt out or not. But I do think that this, I, I wish the law had been crafted in way, in such a way that we could have a referendum question easily added, um, for the November ballot in twenty twenty two. And I would like this board to continue to look at the questions of zoning and look at the questions that we would like to have answered. And I would suggest that we might want to consider a law that would allow us to opt in and put it to a ballot question so that somehow we could get this on the ballot in November. I think that would be the, the, the way to really get the public to weigh in on this.
So.
So just.
But not this November.
No, no, in November twenty twenty two, when we've got all these other ballot questions going on.
Put this on ballot in November. Had we dealt with this before, by July, had we dealt with this when other communities did.
I, I'm not talking about this. I'm talking about November twenty twenty two. I'd like it to be on the ballot then.
We could, we could.
I think that would be a night, you know, and so we would have to have some legislation, you know, opting in and hopefully before that was addressed, we could look at where it could open and look at the time, place, manner that we say we didn't have time to do this time. I'm just saying, I, I hope this isn't the end of the conversation.
Will be, but I think we also need to understand what the regulations are going to be. I mean, we don't know what the regulations.
It also, it also could be the subject of a special use permit.
There are all kinds of ways to do this, but I would like the public to have the opportunity to vote on it when they're voting on all the other ballot questions in November of twenty twenty two. That's all I'm saying.
In order to do that, we have to be ready by July. I mean, that gives us a deadline.
I, I think we should be able to be ready by July.
Okay, let's, let's, let's get, let's get through.
Question, a comment?
Yeah, go ahead.
We're getting a little ahead of ourselves. We, we actually are scheduling the public hearing. One of the reasons is to hear from the public. All right, so I, and I suggest similar as we did with the tree law, let's keep it open at least twice to meetings.
Okay, fair, well, me.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it, you know, it all depends on how people, if anybody votes to make a motion, but I won't make a motion today, uh.
I'll make, well, we.
What, let's, let's just, let's not. I understand Victor's point. Resolution approving participation town paving contract. Do we get that?
Yeah.
We, we, we decided that we did not want to, uh, pursue this in the work session. Okay. Communication to the board, round two. Blessedly, I see no hands up. Report from the village manager.
You're unmuted.
Muted, Danny.
Sorry, I just wanted him to report, Mr. Mayor, uh, file for the record, the agreement with Evergreen Arbor is for the tree and high dead branch removal.
Thank you. A report from the clerk treasurer.
I think at this time, Mayor.
Report from the village attorney.
Nothing from me, Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, we have minutes, uh, commissions, boards and committees, minutes of board trustees, special meeting in September twenty third, the work session and meeting in September twenty seventh, twenty twenty one, uh, minutes of the board of architectural review, meeting of August third, twenty twenty one, and minutes of a planning board meeting, meetings of June twenty third, July fourteenth and July twenty eighth of this year, twenty twenty. All righty, the motion to close.
The motion to adjourn, I think.
No, I mean, a motion to close, adjourn, whatever.
Motion to adjourn.
Second? Nora's second? All roll? No, all, all in favor?
Hi.
Good night, everyone.